I would like to call to order the Thursday, January 24, 2013 special meeting of the Fairfield Board of Education for the purpose of discussing the 2013-2014 budget. If I could ask you to all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll take the roll call. Mrs. Cannelli is here. We're expecting Mr. Convatito, but he's not here at the moment. Mr. Liu is present. Mrs. Gerber is present. Myself, Mr. Dwyer is present. Ms. Iya Konor is present. Mr. Fattabene is present. Mr. Carey is present. And Mrs. Brand is present. I would like to make a couple of comments. One is similar to on Tuesday. I would like to aim at about 9:30 to have all of the questions that we have to ask, asked, especially those that are critical for making the decision on Tuesday. So some of you may have questions that are kind of a better understanding of the budget and/or may require more research, and those might have to be answered, you know, further by the superintendent. And then that will allow the last half hour, if you will, so that we can be out of here by 10 o'clock, that board members might have a chance to indicate if there are any areas that they would like to suggest changes, additions, subtractions, or trade-offs to the budget so that board members would be better prepared for the discussion on Tuesday and so that the superintendent might cost out what the proposal is so that we're all working from the same number. So that's the timetable I'm on. In front of you, as well as emailed late, was the superintendent and his staff's, I'll say, superlative effort to try and get answers to the questions that have been posed by board members. We have about 150 questions that came in between Tuesday and Thursday, so they did a very good job. There's a document in front of you that says world language enrollment and staffing that I think responds to, and also a document, the next one about gifted programs, that I think relate to a couple of questions asked by board members. There's information on the reservation policy and the list of exempt organizations that Ms. Iya Konor had asked for that had been developed prior to the budget process, so that's in there. There's a document that is labeled Board Budget Questions 300 to 600 Series, and I think Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Brand, Mr. Carey, Ms. Iya Konor, and Mr. Convatito will find a lot of the questions they asked in advance answered in this document. In talking to Dr. Tidal, we thought that they're in writing. You can peruse them. I think they give you the information that you need, and rather than have him read through it, that it's there, and there may be other questions that you want to ask tonight so that you don't have to focus on those. The next one is a document labeled Series 100-200, and Mrs. Gerber and Mr. Perry, I think, will find a lot of the questions that they asked within here, not necessarily all of them. There's an additional document about the middle school gifted and talented program numbering, identifying the number of students and the percent that is following that. There is a November year-to-date food service program that Mr. Convatito had asked for more updated information. Because it's only November year-to-date, and we have a lot of the school year left to go, I'm not sure this will get him what he was looking for, but that's what we have at the moment. The town was able to provide a projected insurance fund analysis from their perspective, so, Mr. Carey, I think this gets you to where you were aiming at for a 1230, based on their 1230 numbers that they have. Remember, our numbers are based on November 30, so you will not be able to match dollar for dollar because there's a month difference in the timeframe. There was a question asked about the pullout for different classes, orchestra band and whatnot, and that document is also there. And then I think Mr. Liu had asked for a little bit better explanation of the curriculum leadership structure, and that is here, including the copy of the pages from the operational audit that referenced their perspective on how we should be doing curriculum leadership. And then finally, there is the list of school buildings there that give the square footage per building that Mrs. Cannelli had asked for. And so I think that with the exception of some questions that either came in too late, and so we weren't able to get to them, or required more research than was possible in a day or two, I think we owe Dr. Tidal and his staff a compliment for getting these as quickly to us as he could. And so unless Dr. Tidal has any other commentary that he'd want to make on all the documents, we'll go to Q and A, but if you have comments, please do.
Just for those of you following along at home, we'll post all these on the website tomorrow morning in the Budget section. So if you go to the Budget, where the Budget's posted, copies of the documents will be there. And the same will be true if we produce any additional documents between now and Tuesday. Again, we'll post those to the website as well. That's all I'd like to say.
Again, I'd like to follow the format that I would ask, that once recognized, if you have too many questions to ask, that you kind of break them up so that you allow various board members to be able to participate without being the last board member to speak at 9:15. So we're ready for questions that you might have, and does anybody want to start off? Mr. Carey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So earlier today, I sent the board members a message and a copy of the future cost model that we discussed last meeting. And my thought process was, and has continued to evolve around this, but what I'm hopeful that we could potentially discuss is setting some limits for ourselves as a board. I am concerned that if we don't at some point look at the affordability piece and put a stake in the ground around this, that other boards in this town will for us. My concern around that is that that change could be much more dramatic and disruptive than if we approached this in a responsible and stepped fashion, I think is the terminology I used. So I would like to hopefully continue that conversation a little bit this evening with my fellow board members. My thought process around this was a few things. One was that I think we have an incredible opportunity in the coming months and years around some of the changes that are going to be going on with curriculum and Common Core, to look at our programs. But there's a practical reality when you look at a program. There's a constituency for every program, and there's a reason for that. There's just about every program has got some benefit. But if we don't have a means by which to understand where we're going to start and how far we're going to go from a spending perspective, a budget as it were, and a budget framework, it's very difficult to work and look at all the different things that we do pragmatically and make decisions on the effectiveness and efficacy of them. As we look at each thing, one at a time, there's a constituency that says we have to have that, it's very important. Just as important is having a starting place for how much money we think is fair for us to ask for and working backwards. So my thought process was, and I shared it with all of you, was that we take a stepped approach. We start by picking a number. I had suggested 2%. We figure out how long it will take us to get there, because obviously our superintendent and team have worked this budget up with no expectation of, you know, this type of discussion, and then figure out how many years it takes us to get to that number that we agree on so that our team has plenty of warning and time to plan, and we as a board can look at our program. And again, I think this is an exciting opportunity in that as we start looking at the Common Core, it's my belief based on what I've seen thus far, that we're going to need to start putting more instructional time into some of our core subjects to be successful at these changes that we're going to have to make. And that's going to cause us to make decisions about some of the breadth of our program. So my hope is that we can look at this, decide on what the number would be that we want to get to on an ongoing basis, barring some extra or extraordinary situation that's not foreseen, which obviously our team would bring to us if that situation was, you know, presents itself. And we decide how long it's going to take for us to get there. And the suggestion I made was looking at a scenario like 4, 3, and 2 over the next three years, drawing a line in the sand, letting everyone know that's where we're going to go with this, so there's plenty of time for our team to plan. It's not as disruptive as it would be as if we went from 4, 8, 6 right now to 1 or 0. And that's kind of my thoughts around it. I'm hoping this can stir a conversation over where other board members think it should be, maybe higher or lower, what we're willing to ask for of the town, and then hopefully we can, again, set some limits moving forward. And I wholeheartedly believe that this needs to be done at this table before it's done for us.
Mrs. Cannelli.
As a follow-up, did you, I didn't know if you got an answer to your question regarding what would be the dollar amount if it were a cut to 4% and a cut to 3.5?
I don't think, have I, I've been traveling all day, so I just-
It's in your packet.
It's in the packet.
It's in this packet here?
Okay.
So, it's in here somewhere.
And, Mr. Carey, it might also be helpful if you're thinking that you would like to implement that stepped approach, starting with this year's budget, or is that something that you're talking about projectively?
I think that we have to stop kicking the can down the road, Mr. Chair. I think that we have to make a statement now before this budget starts moving through our representative government process. I firmly believe that we have to make it clear to the town bodies that we're serious about putting a cap on what we're doing. And by the way, you know, and I, again, hopefully I expressed this more articulately than I am now in the message I sent to you folks, but the reality is, is that I'm not saying that we should spend 2% or 3% or 4% every year. I'm saying that that's going to be the limit, and obviously we'd be encouraging the superintendent to come under that amount. And if something extraordinary happened, that we would obviously have to evaluate that on an individual basis, but it would have to be fairly extraordinary. And we've had some extraordinary things happen in the last couple of years, so I'm not saying that's out of the realm of possibility.
For board members' benefit, the answer to the question if we limited the this year's increase to 4% or 3.5%, which I think were the two numbers that Mr. Carey mentioned, we would have to reduce the budget by a million 3 or 2.0 million rounded numbers. Any further conversation on Mr. Carey's commentary? Mr. Fattabene, and then Mrs. Brand.
You know, I certainly agree, at some point, there may be a limit to what the town is willing to pay. But I think that the efforts to limit that not just come during the budget season, but they come during contract negotiations. And I think if you're going to be serious about trying to limit the increasing expenses, the town will have to become serious about their contract negotiations because that's the bulk of the expenses, and that's the reality. If you look at, you know, what's driving the budget this year are the benefits, the cost of benefits. So without a substantial increase in cost share, you're not going to be able to meet the budgetary limits that Mr. Carey is talking about without substantially cutting program and education to the kids. And that's a problem. It's a converging point that is going to be problematic. And I talked about in the past as well, but it's not much avail.
Mrs. Brand.
I agree with Mr. Fattabene, and I appreciate where Mr. Carey is coming from. The board over the years has opportunities all year long to weigh decisions that have a budgetary impact. There are any number of decisions we've made. We've made redistricting decisions. We've made contract negotiating decisions. All of them have a budgetary impact. But where I have a concern is this is our second budget meeting. We're making a budget decision next Tuesday. I feel if we're going to do that, if we were asked by the superintendent to make recommendations, actually, and to be specific, so actually he has some directions, moving forward, I think it would be better if the board had some kind of educational plan, as I said before, and a financial plan so that we're working from. We all know that no superintendent, no board member likes to be surprised, but I think the way this would best suit the needs of the district is if we're all working from a plan. We have an idea of educationally with Common Core, what we're hoping to achieve over the next several years, and financially, then weighing those decisions against our educational priorities. I think that would be extraordinarily helpful, a lot of the things that have been mentioned, but I don't know that tonight and the next two nights, we're going to be able to do that. So, you know, if people have specifics, I know Dr. Tidal has recommended those. I think they were very appropriate for this timeframe. I think what we're talking about here is going to require a much more in-depth conversation, and to be honest, that conversation should take place, you know, spring, summer, fall, so we know where we're going and what our expectations are. About a year ago, I, you know, sent Dr. Tidal some of my educational priorities. Again, the rationale wasn't to dictate, but just as a board member to let Dr. Tidal know what my expectations were going to be. And I think that's important because I think we have to work and not surprise one another when we're moving forward. I just don't think we have the time to accomplish this now, but I do think we should have that conversation after the fact.
On Tuesday, I did indicate that I would make sure that that subject was part of the spring discussion of the budget development and approval process goal that the board had established, but Mr. Carey may want to start that sooner than that timetable would allow, and of course, he has a right to do that either tonight or Tuesday. Any other comments from this side of the table? No? Mrs. Iya Konor.
I do agree that we, I'm glad that Mr. Carey brought this up because we've sort of talked around it and never really talked to it, and I think this is really finally starting the conversation. And I think that Mrs. Brand has an excellent point in the fact that we need to plan it out and figure out what it is we're going to do. Unfortunately, I disagree with the commentary about surprises. I don't think any of this is necessarily such a surprise. We knew that this was potentially going to be a really rough budget year, and we knew that potentially we were going to have high fixed costs. What I don't think we can do is, to use Mr. Carey's term, is kick the can down the road anymore. I think we're just, it's finally here. We've hit a brick wall, and I think that we are going to have to make some very difficult decisions right here at this table, starting tonight and Tuesday. And I know for myself, and it's a very difficult decision to make because it affects 10,000 students in this district, I can't support the increase at what it is right now. It's too much money, and it breaks my heart to say it because there's nothing outrageous or egregious in this budget, and it's everything that we need to do to sustain the program and that we have now. But I think that we are now in a position where we have to change how we're rolling out our programs, what we're doing, and I think now is the time to really take a good hard look at it and make some of those things happen. I would be supportive of 4%. If we're able to get a conversation about caps going forward, I'm happy to do that as well. If we can roll them down to a specific number, if we can come to an agreement on that, I'd be amenable to that. But I do think that if we don't take a serious, hard look at this budget and make decisions about some of our programming right here at this table, there are other people that control the purse strings that are going to make it much more difficult for us to move forward as a district. And I think that time is now. I think we need to look at things. I think we need to look at our high school programs and what we offer and how we offer them. I think we need to look at some of the things that we do at the elementary school level that are great programs, but if we cut back on them, we can increase our instructional time. So it's not such a loss, and I encourage the board to really think about that because it's unrealistic to expect this increase request to go through intact at 4.86%.
Mr. Carey, you want to make a wrap-up comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Liu also wants to make a comment.
Sure, if you'd like to go first, that's fine.
Mr. Liu?
Why, thank you. I agree with Mrs. Brand to a degree in terms of, this is not something that gets decided very quickly, and that's why I think that we want to try to do this in a measured approach. But I firmly believe that if we do not make a statement that goes beyond this year at this table, that we're going to have, it will be to the detriment of our district moving forward through this process. And it's my belief, people could believe something different. I really think that we have to be able to come forward to the town bodies and let them know what our plan is and let them debate it themselves, and they might have a different opinion, but it's going to be important for us to demonstrate where we are. Maybe I had a great analogy, but when I bring my kids to the toy store, if we got everything we needed, they wouldn't be going to college. So there's a certain amount of money they're allowed to spend before we actually get into the store, and they know what their limit is. And this is somewhat of a similar analogy, but this is a very unusual process and probably the only one, this bureaucratic process, that works this way. We come up with all the needs, and they're great, but we need to have a place to work from, a framework financially, and that has to come first. You know, lastly, I'll just say that I am concerned particularly about the size of the health care increase, but as a veteran of the last seven, eight years, either sitting in the crowd or sitting up here, I've heard very loudly and very clearly from the Board of Finance that the surpluses that we have created, that were being utilized to help fund our programs because other costs were in the way, should be kept as surpluses because our luck could run bad and our experience could run bad. And it was a very loud and clear message that we heard, especially two years ago, from the Board of Finance, that experience is good, experience is bad. We've had bad experience. If we go and ask for 100% of this money from this bad experience, I do not think it's going to go well for us. So I really think that we have to look at this on the whole and determine as a board how we do the best for our district. And I agree with Mrs. Brand that I don't think board members should be coming up with seven-figure cuts at this point, but if the board decides that we do have to move backwards on this budget, we're going to need to get the administration's opinion on what will do the least harm and have them give us options between now and Tuesday. Thank you.
Mr. Liu, are you still interested in making comment?
I am still interested. Thank you. Everybody has their ways of looking at things. I find the surprise is that there are members here that are finally seeing that this is a reality that some of us have been talking about for years. To Mrs. Brand's point, how we put together our day-to-day over the year with programs and transportation and contracts add up at the end at budget time. People keep telling me when they come to budgets, they go, "Wow, look at this." And I say, "Come to every meeting, and you will see how it's all adding up. Now you can't be surprised suddenly when this is hitting us." Now, sure, we're having a tough year insurance-wise, but the thing is, if you're more fiscally responsible throughout, when these tough years come, we don't feel it with such a boom. I know we all have opinions on how we should vote on some of these things, but I think, you know, it's, this is where I have to hit my head and go, "This is what we've been talking about." And in fact, it's not the first time that this idea of looking at the future of this budget and this district has been brought up. In fact, I know, Mrs. Brand, and I know myself, have brought this up in years past to say, "We need to talk about the budget. The board needs to be involved in this." And we're not talking about line items, but talking about how we are going to approach the vision of the district and where we're going to go. And we have been shot down year after year. Now we're here. I'm glad we're here. I agree with everybody. This budget cannot hold. This is an outrageous amount, and I'm actually kind of surprised that we even have it in front of us because I don't know how anybody could expect us to pass it like this. But my, I guess my final comment would be, as future boards go forward, they cannot just think at budget time. They have to be thinking along the lines as these proposals come up and as we talk about redistricting and busing and programs and contracts and superintendents, bonuses, we have to be talking about how is it going to end up at the end of the day.
Thank you, Mr. Liu. I believe that's a subject that probably would come up at the end of the night if Mr. Carey wants to say, "And I am going to propose the following, and will the board support seeking how to accomplish that goal so that Dr. Tidal has some direction over the weekend?" Because having the Patriots lost, he has nothing else to look forward to. Other questions related to the budget, Mrs. Brand. Not on this topic, but other questions related to the budget.
Don't worry, I'm going to work. We have program implementation on page 71 in the budget book, and my question is, what programs are we talking about there?
We expanded on that page this year.
Page 138.
There's also some, in the Q and A, some description of what we're doing for next year in there. This was a request from one or two members of the board that we lay out the different elements of the program implementation budget. And in addition, the calendar below shows implementation in 1314 after revision, so that also shows you which programs are going into place for next year. Obviously, the game plan here is the new programs come before the board, so we know that K to 2 math and 6 to 10 math would be, if approved by the board, implemented next year, and they're accounted for in here in a transitional manner. Some other programs, such as elementary language arts, are on a several-year phase-in. So elementary language arts is in here. It's the second year of a three-year phase-in. That budget was approved by the board last year, that curriculum, pre-K to 5. The other is, we've had an ongoing review. I know I talked about this last year, and we did some staffing last year. This year, in the English Language Learner Arena, we've had a group looking at that population, which is a growing population here and has not had new instructional materials in quite some time. And it's not a curriculum or a textbook as such, but that's a chunk in there as well. So I think it's fairly well laid out in, on page 138, 139, and then there's a brief Q and A in here on it.
You have a follow-up?
Yeah, I think I, I mean, I read this. I think what I'm trying to get down to is, we just went through a math piece with a textbook. What I'm wondering is, is there any, you have math curriculum, and I noticed there was a particular one with language arts. So what I'm looking for is, are there going to be some significant change to what we are currently practicing?
In...
Are we looking at some significant changes in our curriculum moving forward?
Well, language arts curriculum was revised last year.
Right.
K-5.
Right.
The secondary language arts curriculum is not undergoing a change at this time. That is scheduled to happen now, next year. We put that off. So that's what's happening in language arts. Math, yes, there are going to be changes, and they're coming to you shortly. And so to implement those changes, we need to buy additional instructional materials. Which ones those are, of course, are the subject of the debate. But the fact is that we're using some books at the high school level that go back 10 or 11 years. And they're outdated. And so whether we buy Book X or Book Y or Book Z, we need to start transitioning to updated instructional materials in math. So I think it's pretty clear, we are going to be doing some different things in math. I think you saw that last year when we brought you the grades 3 to 5 curriculum that you approved. So I don't think that's a big secret. I think the debate really is around the, you know, which series or which book are we going to purchase to implement the new curriculum. I think that's, as I...
If I read the, this page, it's on page 139, it would appear as though in the 2013-14 year, that the board will be asked to approve a revised business curriculum, a revised 6 to 12 language arts, and that we will then, I'll say, finish the math revision because we'll be asked to vote on a revised 11 and 12. Do I understand that correctly?
That's correct.
And so my guess is that the staff will be looking at that in the fall and probably bringing something to us over the winter, spring next year. Rough calendar.
Right. And, yes, and that's, and the funding for those curriculum revisions is in the curriculum development column there. So we would not be implementing anything in those areas in 1314. Those would be implemented in 1415.
Is there a plan to do testing or, you know, trying out these programs before they're purchased in this upcoming year as well?
We're going to be looking at the entire way that we evaluate instructional materials. And whether or not we pilot or don't pilot or try out or whatever we call it is a subject of review. Let's put it that way.
As you know, at one of the last board meetings, we indicated that Board Policy 6200 that covers that, we hope and pray that the policy committee will have finished their discussion so that they can bring something forward to us in September so that we say, "What's the guidance for the next year's process?"
Yeah, I just wanted to see if it was in part in here.
The one thing I want to, do want to point out about the curriculum renewal calendar, because this is a long-range plan. It's related to some of the earlier conversation. We've been tweaking this plan because what we're trying to do are a couple of things with the long-range curriculum renewal. One is to try to do full program reviews wherever possible, and where that's not possible, to do it chunked by elementary or secondary. Previously, the board, might remember, those who were here before, you got a lot of individual courses, and you didn't really get a chance to look at the big picture, which meant you never got a chance to see, for example, what might need to be subtracted, to a point that Mr. Carey was making earlier. So that's one reason why we do it. And the second is that if we space this out correctly, the total dollars that we expend year to year on new text and materials could remain relatively constant. You're simply rolling that from one content area to another. So we don't want to have, you know, two gigantic purchases in one year and then have two years where we're not doing anything, and then another year where there's a huge amount. You want to try to keep it relatively constant and also keep it on some sort of cycle where it's not 10 years between renewals. So that's what, this curriculum renewal calendar, it's been in the budget every year, but it's different every year because we tweaked it. So that's the goal there, and it is a long-range plan for revising our educational program. And when we look at a program, we do need to look at, not just like, what course do we want to add, et cetera, et cetera, but what do we have in there that's archaic and needs to be removed? And that is part of a program review as opposed to course by course. So I think that's an important page for people to look at to see, we do have a longer view of this that's, keeps our curriculum renewed, but also is, keeps the budget fairly constant in that arena.
Do you have a follow-up on the same topic, or...
It's actually a different question, but it was related to something I had asked in here.
Please, go ahead.
I asked for the fuel cost for the transportation, and they're in the contract, but I'm assuming we've budgeted a certain amount of money to be able to pay for the fuel, because I know we're doing it differently now than we did before. In past years, the contract we had, we're paying the bus company a set price, and that included fuel costs. So we were actually more than likely paying a premium, whereas separating this, since the town is going to be buying the fuel, I'm sure we'll have at its advantage that we will have a better price. But what I'm wondering is what that price is within that contract.
Yeah, there's no set price yet because the town has not done its bidding on diesel. It's really diesel is the question.
Right.
They, Twig Holland told us to budget $4.25 a gallon. She thought we might be able to get better pricing than that when they finally bid it, but that's what she's telling all the town departments. You know, we're not the only users of diesel because they're going to bid the diesel for the town side as well. The really difficult thing about this was trying to estimate how many gallons we thought we would use.
Right, that's exactly what I'm asking.
That, I mean, of all the difficulties of budgeting this transportation contract, that had to be right up there. First student was, was actually, gave us a figure, but they gave us a figure of approximately 200,000 gallons that were pumped at the Fairfield Depot, so to speak. And when we, when we ran the numbers on the miles per gallon for a bus and the mileage of the routes, we thought that was on the low end. Because, I mean, this is really deep into the weeds a little bit, but this, this big money at stake here.
Right.
They could be filling up a bus at the Bridgeport Depot and driving it in Fairfield. I mean, just because they're pumping it in Fairfield, I mean, they have contracts all over the place. And so we're not sure that 200,000 is the right number. On the other hand, you know, we calculated a number that was in excess of 300,000 gallons that we thought we might need. And so we kind of split the difference, but we're not going to know the exact gallonage until we run it for a year. And if we happen to get a better price than $4.25 a gallon, well, that would simply mitigate the possibility that we underestimated on the fuel. It's just very hard to figure out when you haven't done it, and they don't really keep it that way. But the purchasing department in the town really thought that in total, it would be in our interest, it's just for the same reason you described it, that the bus company, they have to build in overhead and risk into their calculations when they, when they include it in the price of a bus. And when we assume the risk, it's probably better off in the long run. But so that part of the bus contract is really on shaky ground this year, and we really need to go through, you know, a good, say, three or four months to see what it is, so that next year when we do the budget, we can get a good track record on it.
So right now, it's about...
250,000 gallons is an estimate that our Board of Ed staff created, and $4.25 per gallon is an estimate that the town purchasing department estimated. Those two numbers are what's...
Yeah.
Well, the 250,000, I think you're saying, is built into the bus contract for fuel.
Well, there's no, there's no, there's nothing in the bus contract for fuel.
In the line.
In the budget line.
Right.
It's built in for fuel. And I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, so I don't want to be held to the precise gallonage, but there was a, there was a difference. And we can, I can have Dorian look it up. There's a big, long spreadsheet on this that we can look. So I'll get you the exact gallons that we have in there.
No, I wasn't, I just wanted to know what the total number, amount of money was that was allocated for that, and I didn't know where it was in the budget.
Yeah, it's included in that one line. We didn't break it out as fuel. So it's included, the money, the dollar amount for transportation, when it says like, regular transportation, that includes the contracted costs plus the fuel, plus any state reimbursement we get for those runs.
Okay.
Okay. But I'll break it out.
So the 250 times 4 and 1/4.
Right. But don't hold me to that number.
That would end up, but that's with a caveat that Dr. Tittle's memory may not be exactly on track. The 4 and 1/4 is probably a good number, but...
4 and 1/4 is the right number. I know that's what we budgeted, right.
But the 250 might be an estimate. Other questions that people have?
Go ahead.
Mrs. Cannellian?
Unfortunately, you didn't get my questions in time, so I apologize for their late arrival because I submitted 21 of them, which I don't intend to, I'm hoping, as other people ask theirs, I can start crossing mine off. So far, I've been able to cross off one. So I'll start with a few of them and then turn them over to somebody else. One question I had had was regarding the smarter balanced tests, which will be taken online. And I noticed as part of the technology that there was 175,000 allocated for, because that, I don't know if everyone's aware of that, but the new tests will be taken entirely online. What is your plan for making sure that Fairfield is able to hit the ground on that one?
Right. That's, that's one of the biggest reasons why there's an increase in technology capital in this year's budget. That is a line item that I felt needed to go up, and that's one of the big drivers of it. Without getting into the details, I will tell you that if you recall, last year, the board approved a three-year technology plan. And part of that technology plan was to make sure that when we get to the 14, 15 school year, the, our computers are able to handle this. You know, some of the older computers will not be able to, will not be able to run. So we're doing this over a two- to three-year period. It's not all in this year's budget. This is not the end of it. But as you saw, and Nancy Burns wrote out a fairly lengthy description of each of the technology capital areas, we're replacing computers that go back to 2005, and they're just not going to be, have the capability to run the assessments. It's a big concern in every school district. I think it's one of those unfunded mandates that the legislature has, and the State Board of Education has done, because by adopting the SBACK, Smarter Balanced Assessment Consortium Assessments, they have bought into this notion of computer adaptive testing, where students will take a test, and depending on their answers to the question, the questions will change. It's a very sophisticated program, and actually, we're hoping sometime in the spring to give you a little demo of it and presentation on it, so you can really get a feel for it. But I think if we can maintain this level of capital investment in technology, we'll be able to do it. That's what the game plan is. But that's one of the reasons why that line went up, the tech capital line. So I don't know if Karen or Nancy want to add to that?
I thought you did raise that.
I didn't. All right. We're behind me winner tie, right?
Continue, Mrs. Cannellian.
I had another question because I was, you know, thinking to Mr. Carey's point and knowing that we were going to have to make some cuts. And I had a question for you regarding the number of phys ed teachers who serve as coaches, because it seems to me that as we try to focus on student achievement and what's really important, what we need to do, the idea of if we have a certified teacher serving as a coach, that that might be a means of fulfilling phys ed credits is an idea that I was interested in, in the hopes that, not that I'm looking for someone to lose a job, I'm genuinely hoping that the attrition of somebody retiring and are not filling a position, that this would be another means of gaining credit. Because when I looked online at the physical education curriculum and all of the essential questions, all of which are fulfilled by involvement in a varsity, in any of our inter-scholastic sports, and I was interested in that as an idea.
Yeah, I think that takes a lot more discussion than I can have right here. And obviously, if we'd have people to involve in that, I'm sure there would be strong opinions on that, you know, on a number of fronts. So I think we can look at that. We'd have to look at what the impact of that would be in a lot of different ways. Obviously, we want to involve the headmasters and housemasters and so forth and that. And I don't think that's something I could, you know, give you a straight-up, you know, answer on by Tuesday, but that's something we can look at.
I have a follow-up on that.
Yeah.
Mrs. Iacono?
I too would be very interested in pursuing something like that. I think that's the kind of stuff, that's a perfect example of the things that we need to be thinking about and doing. There are a tremendous amount of students who are involved in athletics, and I'll be, I'll be honest with you, my, my thinking and how this came to be for me is it, while I'm extremely supportive of the physical education program, and I know it's very much an important part of the curriculum, what bothers me is the part where our students are having to make up a class that they miss, and they're missing lunch, and they're missing instructional time to go make up a PE class. And many of these students are involved in athletics. And I think, and I'm thinking to myself, well, why couldn't they get credit to that, for that? So I think Mrs. Cannellian really, I thank you for thinking of that and going there, because I'd be interested in pursuing it and seeing what we could do. And everybody, that's a situation where I mentioned before, everybody wins. You're still getting physical activity, you're still learning something, you're still involved, and it could possibly save the district money. So, thank you.
Yeah, you're done for the moment, right? Mrs. Brand?
Actually, was relative to Mrs. Cannellian's thought, there are a lot of athletes who would jump at the chance. As I recall, this has come up before, and I think there are requirements that the district has that are curriculum requirements that we may not have the option. So I do understand, because as I said, I know quite a few that would have been thrilled at the thought. So, but to be fair, I don't know if actually we are able to do that. Because if I recall correctly, when we discussed this before, it was something we were not able to do.
There's a number of tentacles to this, and again, this is the first, you know, just tuck off the top of my head. You've got graduation requirements that are related to this. If you're going to change your graduation requirements, I think that's in board policy. You can't just do that like that. I think there's a lot of elements to this, you know. And I know there's some uncomfortable choices we have to make, so I don't want to rule anything out. I just think there's more to it than, than that. And if you want to continue the discussion, I'll have one of the headmasters come up and chat about it.
On this topic, or...
On this topic. Yeah, I'll save my other questions.
We're probably at my limit on this in terms of knowledge.
Okay. Mrs. Cannellian, then Mrs. Gerber.
That was a follow-up to what she said.
And it's jumping on what both Mrs. Brand and Mrs. Iacono said. I think that the current budget environment is going to require us to be creative about things. If we want to not sacrifice student achievement, not sacrifice rigor and quality curriculum, we're going to have to start approaching things differently. And I don't see any reason why we should change graduation requirements. I think, you know, quarter credits can be offered, I mean, this can be structured. It can be worked with the department. Again, I read the curriculum before I ever gave voice to this because I didn't want to say anything that would be inappropriate. You know, we need to be in compliance with state statute. I mean, our requirements go far beyond what the state of Connecticut requires, and I don't think we should sacrifice that. Obviously, the health curriculum is something that will have to be taken as a course. So I don't think varsity sports should fulfill that. And I'm not saying necessarily that a full three credits worth could be, but you could have a full two credits worth for some of our athletes. And I just, I think this is the kind of thinking we're going to have to start bringing in on a lot of these things because, you know, it's like what we're saying about the math textbook. If the traditional book is not getting us the results we want, we acknowledge we need to do something different, so let's start tackling it now before we, you know, when we're faced with whatever cuts we're going to face this spring. I'd like to look at it.
Mrs. Gerber, do you still have a comment?
Well, just that I think part of the reason with, in terms of the graduation requirements with the phys ed is because if a student's participating in a sport where the coach is not a phys ed teacher, they can't get credit. So I think that's to Mrs. Cannellian's point, where if phys ed teachers were also coaches, that could perhaps do both. And that's one of the reasons why, at least that was my understanding when I looked into it, why you can't use varsity sports, or JV sports even, as any kind of phys ed credit if the coach is not a phys ed teacher. So that was...
Other questions on other topics? Comments on other topics? Let me get to somebody who's, hasn't had a chance yet, Mr. Confortino?
Page 138, ELL Text and Materials. Can you give me a specific on what that is and what the rollout is on that?
Yeah, we've had, I don't know, Havanna come up for a chant, moment in the sun here. We've had a group of... We've had a group of staff with Ms. Katia Leonard reviewing this program and how we're delivering it and the materials, and I think I'll let her speak to the recommendations that are in there.
Thank you, Dr. Title. Yeah, we've been conducting an English language learner program review for quite a few months now. It involved all the K-12 English language learner teachers, some principals, some teachers, classroom teachers, and we made recommendations in the areas of how we identify students. Clearly, that is delineated by the State Department, so we didn't have flexibility in the type of assessment we could choose. But we tried to categorize students in two areas. One, those students who are learning the basic English language through reading, writing, and oral expression. And two, those students who are moving on to having a firmer acquisition of the English language to access the curriculum and focusing their time with the English language teacher on more social science, math, terminology, and content. So that was one focus of our work. The second focus was then, what does the instructional model look like for those two types of children? Clearly, a child who is acquiring the English language may need more time and a specific instructional model that is different than a child who has a foundation of the English language and is focusing on the content areas that I mentioned. Another piece that we took a look at are the type of assessments that we use, not just the lost links, which is an assessment required by the state, but how do we track progress over time throughout the school year? We're going to make those common by level, elementary, middle, and high school. And then finally, we discussed and identified instructional materials and support materials for students for both of those categories. Instructional materials that are most appropriate for students who are developing the English language, and then instructional materials that help students take the science curriculum, let's say, in eighth grade, and allows them to access the curriculum based on a lower-level text, let's say. And so we have now, for the first time, if this proposal goes through, common instructional materials and supplementary materials in all of, let's say, our elementary, middle, and high school. And this review has taken us a long time to get to, so we really needed to identify those common materials and instructional model for each level. And that's what this represents, the 118.
Is there a report on that?
Not a formal written report, but I can prepare something for you that summarizes what I just said.
You said you've been working on this for some time. There's no conclusion or report that says this is what we need and this is the direction we have to go in?
Yeah, I could have something for you.
Based on standards, okay. I'd like to be able to see that. Okay.
Wait, I just want to make one comment around that, and that is that if you look at the new accountability system the state's rolled out, and you look at the performance of certain subgroups of students, and you look at where the gaps are. One of the areas where we have a gap is in the English language learner population. And so one of the things we really need to do, you know, educationally and so forth, is to take a look at how we're servicing those children so that we can begin to advance their learning, which will benefit the whole district, and that's really where this is coming from.
My only reason for asking the question is it's under a new program implementation, and I just think the board should be aware of what that is and how it came about.
Yeah.
Okay. Question number two, and maybe Anna wants to stay here. I don't know if she's in this one or not. With approximately 20% of our middle school population identified as gifted, okay?
Not her.
Nope.
Run for the hills. Run for the hills.
You don't have to run back to the chair so quickly.
Right, right, right. Well, she heard middle school and scooted.
Okay. That's right. She does elementary, right?
Yes. We have gifted there, too.
And we have proposed in this budget 1.8 FTEs for a gifted learning program, up .6.
Correct.
My question is very basic, and prior to you coming to the district, Dr. Title, the district did away with course leveling, high math, mid math, low math, science, the whole thing. Would these students not be better served by going back to a leveling system and getting rid of these .4 gifted teachers in these middle schools and really delivering, you know, curriculum appropriate to their ability on a full-time basis?
The short answer is no. First of all, leveling was not eliminated in all of the areas. It was reduced. So at the middle school, there are still several, you know, there's two levels of math, and then for some students, of course, they can be double accelerated or more. So levels still exist in, you know, in mathematics at the middle school level. There are not levels in language arts, but the instructional model there really does work to meet the needs of students. There was a, at all levels, you know, there was, and I believe, you know, this started before I came about the gifted review, I think it actually came out of the strategic plan. Dr. Rosado was the guru on this one. It was, took the lead, and there was a whole explanation, I think, at the time when we put the new model in, of what it was going to do, and that it would have to be phased in because of the large number of students being identified as gifted, well in excess of national and state averages. But that we were not going to de-gift kids, for lack of a better word. And so while we had these large numbers, we were not really able to offer a full-blown, you know, gifted program, but that this would be the year that we would start a small pull-out program for those that are identified as gifted, and that would be something that the parents could opt into instead of a unified arts program. So I'm not a proponent of restoring levels. I think that on balance, it is beneficial to everybody. But I also believe that, you know, there is a time and place for a gifted program at elementary and middle school, but obviously, only if you can afford it, you know, like everything else. So at this point, I don't think that's an either-or there, and I think that, you know, to be true to the plan that we put forward, that's why we need the extra .6. Obviously, it's not cast in stone, and if you can't afford it, then maybe you don't go there for next year and you put it off. But we are working our way through largely, you know, identification of a large number of students that are still with us. That's still an issue for us that we will take years to correct.
Do you have a follow-up, or?
I have a follow-up.
Mrs. Iaccona?
Well, no, go to Mrs. Gerber first. She was.
Mrs. Gerber has a follow-up.
Yes. I guess my question is, are there any requirements to having a gifted program in middle school? Do we have to have a middle school gifted program?
We don't.
You have to identify.
The only requirement with respect to gifted at any level, as far as the state's concerned, is we're required to identify. But we're not required to implement a program.
And how much does the identification process cost? Do we know approximately?
Yeah, I mean, we have a budget for gifted identification that's, I think that's the $48,000 number.
And that's K through 12.
And, well, we don't do it, yeah, we don't do it above middle school. Right. It's mostly, most of that expenses at the elementary level, second, fourth grade. And that was also a result of quite a study done by teachers and parents. Were involved in this whole development of the elementary program, which included the assessments, the cutoffs, the review process. There was a very extensive report on this to the board. But I would believe that, you know, we have a very extensive identification process. Now, I think there would be a lot less interest in such an extensive identification process if there were no program. So my guess would be if the programs were completely wiped out, and I'm not advocating that, this is a completely hypothetical thing, if there were no program at all, the identification process could be considerably less rigorous because the stakes would be, you know, much lower. I can't guarantee that, but I don't think that it would be as, you know, perhaps as large an expenditure on an annual basis if there was no program to put kids into. But identification is required.
Mrs. Iaccona has a comment on gifted and talented, if Mr. Confortito will yield?
I'm just curious. I'm sorry, can you, I know you've explained it, but I just apologize for not following it. The kids that are in the program at the middle school right now, if they were to go back and take the test again, some of them wouldn't qualify for the gifted program in the new, under your new program?
It's possible. It's possible, because the, in some cases, the cut scores were raised.
Okay.
All right. So it's possible, right.
And what, and all of the, that would be current sixth, seventh, and eighth graders right now? How far down, how far down does that drop?
Yeah. Well, those are the numbers, right? I mean, we gave you the numbers of kids identified in each one.
No, I mean, when did it change? At what?
Was it, last year was the first year of the new assessments. Right. And then another change this year.
Yes, yes. No, thank you. All right. And what, and you said our numbers are much higher than the state and national. What are those numbers? Do you know?
Six, seven percent.
Really? And we've got 22, 19, 22, 14, 19, 18, 23, really?
Those are real.
I see that we have approximately 20 other schools in our DURG-B, and virtually none of them have a gifted program at the middle school. Avon, no. Greenwich has some self-contained programs. Sinsbury, we don't know. Brookfield, we don't know. Guilford, no.
I don't know if we've completed that research, right?
Yeah.
We haven't finished it. That request came in, it takes a while to get back to.
Right, no, yeah.
We also haven't done the Southern Fairfield County either. I think they requested for DURG-B, but a lot of times, people want to know what's happening in Southern Fairfield County as well as DURG-B.
That's a true and fair statement.
Right, so.
I'd be interested in looking a little bit more at this and what the cost out for the program at the middle school is.
Okay. Wait, Mr. Confortito, continue. Okay, Mrs. Cannellian.
As a quick follow-up, to make this list truly accurate and following up on Mr. Confortito's point, it'd be good to know not only who has gift programs and of what nature, but do they then have leveling?
Yes.
So that, just to get a more complete picture, if they're meeting those educational means in another way, then the fact that someone doesn't have a program gets put into a different perspective.
That's a good point.
I just want to be really clear about leveling and where I stand on this. Regardless of whether or not we have a gifted program, I am not interested in adding more levels in the school system. We made a commitment to this before my time. It is being implemented. The leadership team here is committed to it. To me, they are independent decisions. So I just want to be clear on my position on that, okay?
Wait, Mr. Confortito, are you done on this subject, and I can move on to other board members?
Same subject.
Oh, I want to make one follow-up to that statement, because I said this to the parents who I met with them. I'm also not interested in further collapsing of the levels, all right? So in other words, I'm not looking to delevel any further, and I'm not looking to add levels, okay? I think we've got a happy medium in there, and there's educational justifications on both sides of this. So I just want to be clear that, you know, for example, the math curriculum when it comes forward is not going to say, no more levels at the middle school, all right? Or the language arts, or whatever. So we're not trying to compact the levels, we're not trying to expand the levels. I want to stay the course on levels.
Mrs. Brand, and then Mrs. Iaccona?
In my opinion, as a board member, I think we have an obligation to all students to try and challenge them and meet their needs. If we have identified children that have some kind of exceptional needs, I think we have an obligation to do our level best to meet those needs. Now, how we go about that, that's a different story. What we've talked about in classrooms is differentiation, and what I've wanted as a board member for a very long time is built into our curriculum challenging pieces, which would actually have a teacher already have pieces that are already designed, written in any given topic, in any given week. If a child shows some exceptional interest, that there is something challenging that can be given and encouraged. Further, there are students, and there always will be, which are your top one, maybe your top 2% that are exceptionally gifted, and their needs will not be met within the district standard classrooms. And actually, historically, the district has addressed those and moved kids appropriately. They've looked at their developmental needs, their academic needs. They've done an exceptional job. What we're talking about here, when we typically talk about districts or national, we're usually talking about gifted, that's about the top 3% to 5%. This area, we give a test that is a very broad-based test. So there's a lot of room in there, and it tends to favor, as it often does, children that read well and are coming in very well-prepared to begin with. In fact, to that end, we've noticed over the years that we didn't see a lot of children that were identified gifted in McKinley. That didn't mean they weren't there, that just meant they weren't walking in with those same advantages. So how we're assessing them and tagging them and how we're best meeting our needs remains to be seen. Right now, we're attempting to do something. It may not be the best, but I still would encourage us to make sure that we have all, hopefully, agree that we have a sense to meet those needs.
Thank you. Mrs. Brand has a, Mrs. Brand, thank you. Mrs. Iaccona has a follow-up.
I agree with you, Mrs. Brand. I'm actually, leveling has nothing to do with my rationale here. I think you're, this is, again, exactly where we need to be going. Things about what can we afford to do and where we need to go. Let's still meet the needs of the children who need to be challenged. Let's work on our differentiation, and let's have the teachers be able to be fully prepared to give them those materials. And in the meantime, maybe it's time to phase out our middle school gifted program and replace it with something that would work in that fashion. I would be in favor and would support doing something like that. I want the children's needs to be met. I want them to be challenged.
Mrs. Brand?
Honestly, again, I think these are all good ideas. I just don't know if the budget time is the time to have this discussion. I think there's a plan set in place. I do think that this is a great discussion. It has merit, but I don't know if we're going to be able to come up with a plan to address the needs in the next five months, six months, in order to have the next academic, financial year come in and be able to address it appropriately. That's my concern. So I'm not, you know, ready to move that quickly.
One last comment on gifted and talented? We can keep going, just that I want to make sure other topics are covered.
No, but I just want to say, I cannot reiterate enough. I would love the gift of more time. We don't have it. We are going to be cut. We are going to lose money. We have to start having the conversation right now, like it or not, and then it's going to be, trying to think of the right way to say it, because I'm not going to say it the right way, but it's going to be up to administration, and they're going to be pressed up against the wall to make it happen and make it happen the right way, because we're just not going to have the money to do it. I would love a year to figure it all out. We don't have it.
Thank you. Mr. Confortito?
Yeah. I just want to follow, I'm not looking to eliminate a gifted program. I'm looking for a better way to deal with gifted students, okay? And, you know, in our math curriculum, we allow them to move ahead, okay, into upper classes and so forth. I don't see that on the language arts side. I don't know if it's practical enough to do it on the language arts side. That's why I'm asking the questions. Is there another way to do it other than bringing in gifted teachers and doing a pull-out system, okay? Is there, you know, a way to do it with, you know, you don't have to take sewing, okay? Not a class I loved in middle school, okay? But I could take, you know, an intro to journalism class instead, okay? Is there another way to do it with the staff that we have to be able to deliver that gifted population, an alternative to standing in the back of the eighth-grade choir and mottling the words? Okay? I'm just looking for, you know, options. Are there better options? Are there different options that we could, that would be cost-effective and so forth? And as far as when we should have the conversation, well, you know, if I look at the school, you know, our calendar, I don't know when we have the conversation. So now is as good a time as any, I guess.
Any other questions or comments on this or other subjects?
Other subjects?
Other subjects. Mrs. Brand?
Okay. We were talking earlier about the technology plan. It's my understanding that the PTAs are raising funds. So my question is, how are we assuring equity across the district? And how much the technology plan that was submitted to the state, are we on target? Are we trying to compensate for that in our budget? And how much are we counting on the PTAs to supplement our... And how much are we counting on the PTAs to supplement our, our technology plan? Because what, the amount of money they're doing now is pretty significant.
Yeah, I think we wrote out an answer to that somewhere.
Yeah, I looked for it in my email. I didn't see it.
It was there, I remember reading.
You did?
Um.
The answer was there is no PTA money budgeted in their technology budget.
Right. The, the, um, individual PTAs, and this is a source of controversy within the PTAs themselves, yeah, this would be in the three hundred, six hundred is my guess, right? Yeah, it's, um, the pages are numbered, but it's the third to last page. Where it says, um, yeah, question twenty.
Yeah, the three hundred to six hundred series document, third to the last.
Right, and twenty-one.
Question number twenty and twenty-one.
Right. So we, um, we view, um, PTA contributions as supplemental. The budget ensures a baseline level for everybody. We do have, um, regulations around gifts with respect to technology to ensure that if there is a donation, that it, it's compatible with our system, that it doesn't give us undue costs, that it, um, is something that, uh, our tech department can easily handle on an ongoing basis and so forth. But, uh, we've also made it clear to, to the PTA and, and that, um, should you donate to us and, um, we are moving forward with, uh, budget, you may be supplanting something that the district eventually might be purchasing for your school. Some PTAs think that's a risk they're willing to take because they don't know when we're going to get to it. So, um, our budget, our technology plan does not in any way depend on PTA funding. PTAs can, uh, can supplement that. And then if we feel there's an imbalance out there, then that's where we would need to use the budget to correct that imbalance. But it's, we don't, we don't count on the PTA funding and I know that, uh, this is a source of, uh, some discussion among the Connecticut PTA, the PTA Council, and individual PTAs, so, um, we don't, we don't count on that funding.
Did you have a follow-up?
It's actually another question. I was looking and I know we have, um, services for the Board of Education. I wanted to know how much Cabe, um, what, what, we are paying Cabe every year. I didn't see it broken out.
And most of that is Cabe. It's, uh, we know the Cabe dues exactly. I would have to get that.
There's an amount in there for twenty thousand dollars. And that was my question.
Yeah, that sounds right. That's about right for Cabe. It may have its own line. Does it have its own line, Doreen?
Cess did, but I didn't see it for Cabe unless I'm looking.
If it's Board of Ed, Board of Ed dues for twenty thousand, that'd be, Cabe's in that ballpark. That sounds about right. Yeah.
And do we?
That includes the policy service.
Well, I guess that's what I was going to ask. What services? Because I remember at one point they were going à la carte. What services does that now include?
That does include the policy service that we utilize quite a bit. It obviously includes, uh, access to their legal department when, uh, we need a general legal question answered. We don't have to call and pay our own lawyers for that. And we use, you know, the biggest thing we get from them are the policies, but, uh, obviously in addition to that, you know, Cabe is your, a professional development for, uh, board members in terms of, uh, conferences, trainings, webinars. Uh, it's also an advocacy group that is representing boards of education at the state level, at the state, uh, you know, state government, uh, legislature and, and so forth. So that sounds in the ballpark for what the Cabe dues are.
Thank you.
Mr. Lou?
Thank you. I'd like to talk about security. I obviously don't want to add to the budget, but I know you've discussed that security that's, that you're dealing with right now is coming out of the current budget. How much is that you've put aside?
Well, we're, um, we're anticipating spending, I would say, you know, we still have to get exactly what system we want to get. Mainly the, the expenses are for the buzz-in systems, the buzz-in, uh, buzz-in, intercom, video camera systems for the schools. We're still getting pricing. We may or may not have to bid it. Looks like they're in the vicinity of about eight thousand per school. So eight thousand times seventeen, that's about the number we're looking at for this year.
And we have that money? Because I thought we were.
We will be fine with that. Uh, we're going to use, probably two-thirds of that will come from the not buying the lockers for Fairfield Woods Middle School. And then, um, you know, we will be, um, uh, looking at other expenses in the, uh, facilities area and perhaps not doing a, another project or two in there that are not, that are not on the docket yet, but, uh, provided we get our, um, our Osborne Hill funding from the RTM on Monday night, then I'm confident we're, we're in good shape. You know, so as, you know, my caveat on all of this has been, you know, we, we can absorb this as long as we're made whole on Osborne Hill. So we are, we are cutting back on something. It's not a freebie, but, you know, clearly it was a priority and I didn't want to wait, you know, till next year to do it.
Along the same line on security, something that I've been meaning to bring up with this board and I probably will do it at the next regular meeting is, pertains to security in terms of mental health. And, um, I guess my question is, if we, well, I'm really hoping that we are going to form a policy on that. Risk assessment in terms of our psychologists, are they equipped?
I'll let Andrea talk to that. She's probably better versed in it than I am, yeah? She's on the front lines of this more than I am.
The best-trained people in the district to do risk assessment are our social workers.
Um, and so I guess my question though is, are they certified risk assessment?
Well, there's no actual certify, certification in risk.
They're trained to do this?
Yes. Part of their license.
Right.
To be licensed clinical social workers as well as certified school site, school social workers is to hold, um, that training to do risk assessment for everything from suicide, suicidal ideation, all the way through, um, other areas of risk, including, you know, externalizing risk.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Lou?
No.
Mrs. Iaccona?
And looking at the music program. And again, I do all of this with a heavy heart. I, I, when I spoke earlier this evening about having to bring this down, honestly, my heart was racing. I love our music program. I go every year to the high school and I'm just overwhelmed about what they can put on and what these students have achieved being here. However, as I start to think about this again, in terms of how we can scale back but still keep our programs intact, I think this is something that we have to, to look at. In the elementary schools, when you get to fifth grade, you add an additional period for chorus. What would our savings be if we maintained having two periods of music instruction, but one thirty-minute period would be music and the other would be chorus? That would increase our instructional time in the classroom, but you would still be getting exposure to music and chorus. Orchestra, they get two thirty-minute periods. What would happen if you only went to one thirty-minute period? What would happen if you started strings? What would the savings be if you started strings in fifth grade rather than in fourth grade? I had asked to look at the pull-out program for the middle school. I don't see that here. Maybe you guys are still working on that.
It's in the text, I think.
Oh, in the text, okay. I guess my question is, how can we increase instructional time and, um, find some savings in our music program?
Well, we can cost anything out.
Okay. Those would be two of the things I'd want to start. I need to read the other stuff before.
Yeah, you know as well as I do that, um, when you start talking about things like moving, you know, orchestra from fourth to fifth or less time for it, it is a degradation of the program.
I fully, I, I, listen, I.
Right.
I didn't ask to eliminate strings altogether.
I understand.
I'm, I'm just trying to figure out ways to scale back.
Right.
People are constantly asking us, please, are there places you can scale back? I'm simply throwing out discussion areas of, can we scale some of this back? And again, I'm thinking the backend benefit is they're going to get increased math instruction. They're going to get increased language arts instruction. So it's really, I'm trying to look at it as the glass being half-full instead of half-empty. I'm going to get the math out of it. So, you know, these are the kinds of things that I don't, I did not run for the Board of Ed to sit here and figure out which programs I'm going to cut. This is not fun. But it's just where we are and it's reality and we just cannot continue to do things the way we were doing. And there's going to be a thousand music people lined up at that microphone on Tuesday night saying, "Mrs. Iaccona doesn't like music." And that's not true. I'm trying to save the program, honestly. I'm trying to figure out a way to keep it intact. So, um, that's something that I would, I would suggest that, that we look at.
Mr. Lou?
I, I just would be extremely cautious at cutting programs that are already small anyway. Music programs, I think, are, are brilliant in this, in this district. I think music is math. I think there are lots of different ways to educate people, um, in the foundations of what we call reading, writing, and arithmetic, and they're not just in the straightforward lessons of reading, writing, and arithmetic. You know, these programs are always the first ones to go. They're already small. I would really caution this board that this is not necessarily the first place to look. And since, uh, can I, can I go on?
Continue.
You know, one of the areas that I would like us to look first before we go into the programs is our central office. This is not an attack on what they do and their work, but, um, we have a huge central office with secretaries and, and administrators who have two secretaries, lots and lots of clericals. I appreciate the amount of work that's getting, that has to be done, but it seems to me that we need to consolidate and reduce in this area. And this doesn't necessarily directly affect the children and I think it's something we, we need to look at.
Thank you. I, I, Mr. Fattabene wishes to weigh in on something.
Something, it just, well, I, I guess, we have a class-size policy. To what extent, if you were to adjust a class-size policy, would that, um, perhaps be able to keep some of the program but increase the class size and therefore maybe reduce some of the, uh, number of teachers necessary? You can get through attrition and so forth. Is that of any, uh, is that an area in which may have some sufficient impact to help reduce the budget without, uh, too much harm, in your opinion?
Point of clarification, are you talking about a specific level when you ask?
I'm, I would look at all levels and see what the class size is and what could be tolerated and perhaps increasing that class-size, uh, guidelines.
There are contract provisions in upper grades, so if we ask the question first about the elementary level, it said if we added one to the class school, the guidelines, what would that result in? The impact on the average class size and how many teachers, sections would it save?
Right, one or two.
That might be one way to have a very clear question.
To get a feel for whether that would have any significant impact so that we can say maybe that's an area where we sort of compromise, um, but yet maintain some of the programs we have.
Yeah, your, your, your leverage, your, your ability to, you know, laterally with respect to class size is at the elementary level because of the contract provisions on crew size or community size or teacher load at the secondary schools. Those, we, we follow those and go right, you know, as close to the limits as we, as we can. So, um, any savings there has already been, you know, in here. In fact, the board negotiated, uh, uh, an increase in those communities, if you remember in the contract, particularly at the middle school. Um, and, and the board did save, I think it was three-point-five positions in the current budget as a direct result of that contract negotiation. So really, you'd be looking at, to be honest with you, elementary class size would really be your target if you wanted to get into class size. The others would require a negotiation, uh, with the Teachers Association. I did, um, copy, is this, uh, out of the audit. Uh, the audit looked at the administrative staffing levels in the district relative to benchmarks and other districts, uh, both on the curriculum side, administrator's side. I actually looked at the whole central office and actually concluded that we were understaffed for a system our size, that, in fact, there had been reductions made, that, before my time, reductions made in clerical staff at the central office, um, as a percentage of the total budget. And they turned the thing upside down. So obviously, you can do whatever you want to do, but I did put a excerpt from the audit in your papers. You probably had a chance to read that, but it will, it'll bring back memories for those of you that were here in 2010.
The document that is in your packet that has the front piece being curriculum leaders attached to that, so if you're looking for it and you see curriculum leaders attached to that, are the pages from the operational audit that responds to comments that were made about central office. Uh, Mr. Confortito, can I go to Mrs. Iaccona?
Just a clerical.
Mrs. Iaccona?
I'm sorry. Did it, Dr. Tylder, did it, um, we were, we're under, I'm, we're understaffed at administrators? I, I very clearly remembered that. It also said we were understaffed in, in clerical areas as well?
No, it didn't say we were understaffed. It said, it actually, it actually, just as an example, there's a, I didn't copy this page, but there's a little, as an example of this, is a, a description about the Human Resources Department.
Okay.
And it benchmarks it against it and as a percentage of total budget, looking at what other school systems have our size. Because you might look at the Human Resources Department and say, "Well, we've got this person. They've got three support people." But they look at that for a system our size with as many employees as we have, they actually concluded that we were spending less in this district on Human Resources Administration than, than others. And I think you go around, you'd find the same, the same thing. But again, you know, it's not a battle that I can win.
Mr. Confortito, Mr. Carey, and Mrs. Brand?
Okay, back to the book. Through the chair to, to Dr. Tyler or Tom Cullen, if, um, we can just do a review of page one fifty-four, Maintenance Projects, two thousand thirteen, fourteen.
I'm sure Tom would love to come up and talk about it.
He's been hiding back there behind Anna, so I figured I'd, I'd grab him now.
I'll tell you that this is one of those areas where, um, Tom maintains a list of high-priority projects in the district and, uh, got about half of what he asked for. So while this budget may be higher than you might want, um, there was a lot of pruning to it before it came to you. And, uh, this is one of the areas that I'm always reluctant to, to scale back. I think it's an area we should invest more in, but, um, this is what survived the cut. So you want him to just walk through each project?
Mr. Confortito, there's several pages here. Did you have a?
Yeah, I, I just want to, and I know there's, there's summaries in there. General questions. Generator hookups and so forth. What was our loss in the last two years on food and so forth because we didn't have those hookups? Is there any backup or substantiation for that?
Uh, yes, there is. I don't have it with me, but we provided information for Hurricane Irene and Hurricane Sandy to the town.
I, I think it's, it's critical that we have those, those numbers as backup to this, um, you know, so we can determine how crucial that is. Couple of things that really caught me. HVA systems at Osborne Hill and at Sherman School. Systems are, what, less than four years old at this point in time? I know you say there's a humidity problem there. How are we dealing with them now, the, the high humidity issue?
Uh, right now, we're not dealing with them. We're just monitoring them, but, uh, in the springtime and, uh, September, we're noticing with the AC running. It's a powerful HVAC system and, um, we're getting high humidity levels because the AC is so powerful in there. We had some issues with this in the new schools, too. We had an issue at McKinley in the kitchen area. It was at the, uh, beginning of the HVAC system. Uh, the kitchen gets hit first, so it's cooled extremely fast. And by the time the cooling gets to the end of the zone to meet the needs of the other rooms, the kitchen's getting overcooled and a high humidity problem. We also had an issue at Roger Little Middle School, the locker rooms, right where the system first pours into the locker rooms and before it gets to the end of the trunk. system first pours into the locker rooms and before it gets to the end of the trunk, we were getting a high humidity reading. So there's several ways to fix that. Believe it or not, they actually put a heating element in the ductwork so that the air conditioning, the beginning of the trunk, the heating element mixes with the AC and you don't get that high humidity and wet dampness in those areas before it gets to the end of the trunk. So the two annex buildings have large HVAC systems to support the heating and air conditioning needs of those. We were finding that when teachers came back to school in late August, beginning of September, they were noticing it's very humid and damp, a little wetness on the walls. We started investigating that with our contractor and outside vendor.
Okay. Fairfield Woods, humidity, you mentioned there was an indoor air quality issue there. Is there backup on that?
Yeah, that's a different, different project than the two annex buildings. When Fairfield Woods Middle School renovation was done in the mid 90s, it's our understanding from the consultants we're working with that the new concrete slabs that were poured were done in a way that the vapor barrier and the sand and gravel were reversed. So it's, it's an issue that's under all the concrete floors. We fixed it with a company we hired from the Midwest that came in and took the tile floors off, took the adhesive off, put a sealant on the slab to try and seal it like a sandwich, and then re-glue it and re-tile it. It worked in the science labs in some of the hallways, but this music suite, it's rising to the surface, it's very damp. If you walk through there, some of the VCT tiles are cupping, there's some staining, some of the glue is oozing through, which means the water's mixing with the adhesive, and we're having an issue there.
So this was remediated once before?
In a different area of the school.
But, so this area was not remediated?
No.
And the remediation used in the other areas worked?
Yes.
John, if I could, could I clarify? That the remediation happened in all three spaces, but it did not work in music? Or it wasn't done in music?
The remediation we first worked on was the science rooms, which is in the other side of the building. It's where the addition was done in 96, but it was a different area of the building. This music suite area has been humid. We first noticed it when we went in and saw all of the chairs, the round feet on them were leaving marks behind.
Additional questions, John?
Yes. McKinley School, protection for playground area, install concrete knee wall. Can that be done with the, the yellow filled concrete posts at a lesser cost?
We could look at a lesser cost. Right now, there's some stanchions up there, and they get moved around, they get knocked down, and to me, it's a safety issue.
Well, I'm looking, you know, the, the yellow poles they fill with concrete and you bury them six feet.
The bollards?
Yeah.
We probably could do it with the bollards. Yeah, we could look at that.
Okay, if you could look into that, thank you. Hundred thousand dollars at Tomlinson, two low lying drains in the cafeteria. Is this a persistent problem? How long has it been going on?
Yeah, this is, we had three bad rainstorms where these drains just couldn't handle the water, and we tried to scope them out and the scope wouldn't go all the way through to the road. So there's definitely some collapsing in the 1917 piping. There are two low lying areas down by the cafeteria, so when the drains can't meet the need, the water fills up and pours into the cafeteria. Twice, we had to do some tile replacement and some wall repair in the cafeteria from the water damage.
Have we shot those lines? Have they been in them with cameras to see them?
Yes, we tried and couldn't get all the way to the street, which means there's a collapse somewhere.
Fairfield Ludlow, upgrade lighting in the parking area, 25,000. Want to talk a little bit more about that one?
Yep, the light bollards that were put in around the Ludlow campus for Ludlow High School and Roger Ludlow Middle School are just...
Are they functioning now?
Some of them are, some aren't. They're literally falling apart. They're on a very inexpensive concrete footing. And they weren't done, built or designed with tamper proof screws. So some of the students have figured out you can unscrew the top. The top plate comes off and it acts as a frisbee. So a lot of them are remiss, are missing. And they found that if they wiggle them a bit, they can loosen them and knock them over. So it's been an issue around the campus.
Who says our students aren't creative? John, I think Mrs. Cannelli has a follow up on that particular project?
On both the Roger Ludlow and Fairfield Ludlow, because the description within the text here had talked about issues of cars hitting the base. And so my question had been, instead of $50,000, could we put some reflector circles on the bases?
Yeah, we, we've tried a lot of different things with these. Our take on it is we want to eliminate the telephone pole light fixtures that are in the parking lot. They're not in islands, they're not in grass areas where the trees are, they're literally in with the lines of the parking. And some of the students and some of the staff are bumping them, some of the plows, when they're plowing the snow are bumping them. So we're looking at a design that will get them to the perimeter and get them out of the middle of the parking lots.
Thank you. Mr. Convetito, do you have further questions on maintenance, major maintenance projects?
Is there anything here that is not currently leaking or falling over that you have listed?
I had questioned the Osborne Hill lights exactly on that topic.
Yeah, the, the Osborne Hill exterior lighting, we had a painting company come and look to see if they could scrape down all the rust and the rotting and fill in some of the holes and repaint them. And literally, he said to my maintenance guy, are you kidding? They're bad. He said, you'll spend more for me trying to repair them, sand them down, get rid of the rust and fill in the holes than you will replacing them. We did replace some at Jennings, it was a lot less. We're starting to look at the outside lighting, a lot of it's getting old and rusted at the schools. To answer your other question about anything that's not leaking or falling down?
I mean, you have repairs of skylights at McKinley, at Jennings, at Ludlow. Are they currently leaking or are they not leaking? I know you have a systematic plan in place. I'm, I'm just...
They're not major leaks. If you walk around and look up at the skylights, you'll see there's brown staining around them. We've had them repainted several times. But as I explained in the questionnaire, I wanted you to know that as we tackled our roofs, you know, our consultant told us we need to start thinking about skylights, they don't last forever. The McKinley ones just happened, two of them are in real bad shape and two are in pretty good shape. It's just two of them didn't do well. And the other schools were monitoring them.
Thank you.
You're done, Mr. Convetito?
Thank you.
Mr. Carey?
So, and, thank you, Mr. Convetito, for bringing this up because, and, and this is no slight to you, Mr. Cullen, as I understand that we very politely ask for buildings and additions and adjuncts, and the town very kindly provides them for us through some form of building committee. And then you receive them, and then four years later, we have to spend tens of thousands of dollars to fix something that wasn't quite done properly in the first place. Since Mr. Dwyer was kind enough to give me his assignment to be on the Building Committee Committee.
Building, Building Process Review Committee.
Building Committee Process Review Committee. Perhaps Mr. Cullen or maybe Mr. Convetito, I know he's a veteran of some of these committees, can, can help me. As someone who used to sit out there and now sits here, this is a recidivist problem. We continually spend tens of thousands of dollars on things that are new. And we're not breaking them, I don't think. So what can we change in our process that I can recommend on behalf of this board so we don't have this problem? And a simple question I have, and this might be very naive, don't we ask these contractors to bond forward 10, 20 years against these types of things so that we don't have to pay for them? Or is that not how it works?
I mean, on a lot of things, there's only a one year contractor's warranty. And then there's extended warranties, limited warranties on other components. And so Mr. Cullen may have other comments he wants to make.
Building envelopes, certain things in equipment, we get a longer warranty life. But generally, the contractor gets one year in parts and labor once installed. And, you know, we meet with the building committees and the architects usually before a project. We go over a lot of the like materials that are doing well in the district. A lot of the time, they do follow it, you know, ceiling pans, like ceiling pads, light fixtures, certain types of generators, boilers, and they have been following it. But, you know, when architects want to put skylights in and...
Is there something that we can do as a board, as a community, to stop this? To be able to recover our money when things are not done well? Should we say no skylights in our red specs? Would that change this dynamic? I mean, I don't know. I'm just posing this as a question, it might be a discussion better for another day. But I know we're going to go through these other boards, they're going to say, what the heck did the Board of Ed do when they built that building? Which we didn't build. But we really appreciate the fact that the town built it for us.
And we had no...
Undoubtedly. It's just that, you know, why aren't we maintaining it properly? Well, it's brand new, it's three, four years old. We're maintaining it pretty well, I think. It, it can't break that fast. So I just, if anyone has any suggestions and we could take this offline, I'd love to hear them, because I would love to find a way that we can not be in this situation where we're spending $30,000 on a roof a couple of years ago at Fairfield Woods. We've got siding that we have to, not Fairfield Woods, Roger Ludlow Middle School. We have a leaky roof at McKinley under 10 years. We have a leaky, we have a huge HVAC problem with a brand new burb school. I can go on and on. And sat through these meetings, and this has cost us millions of dollars over time for things that were new and should be working. So if anyone can give us suggestions that we can bring to this committee, I would happily bring them for the board so that we can avoid this.
And if you...
Mr. Convetito might have one. I'm ecstatic to listen to it.
Brand was going to ask a follow up.
Sorry, Mrs. Brand.
I'm going to speak to just one of these. One of these was Tomlinson. If I remember when that project was done, there was a sewage pipe that was completely disintegrating, and that had to be replaced. And I guess what I'm looking at, I'm looking at a drainage pipe that was also from 1917. It just stands to reason if one was disintegrating, so was the other. And I, I feel exactly the same way. We keep revisiting these same sites, fixing things that should not need to be fixed. We have enough to do without maintenance, without being, quote, "the cleanup crew" for projects that were not completely or well done. Now, relative to what Mr. Carey said, is it possible to have the town attorney look at what we're doing in our contracts and how these are being written to help protect us from this? Because just a year is not cutting it when we're doing buildings that have this much use. If we have our own engineering department in the schools, but also the towns accompanying us with those walkthroughs with a fine tooth comb, so before we accept it, we know, for instance, that a drain like this was not snaked, we don't know that it's going to work, so we don't find after they've left the door and have signed off that we now have a problem.
We, we're looking at trying to end by 9:30. We have about 11 more minutes to go, but if the majority of the board wants to continue, it's of course at their pleasure. Mr. Convetito?
The only suggestion, you know, I would have to this board on something like that is that we, we don't accept the building for the first 11 months that it's in operation. And we, we do a thorough evaluation of that building for 11 months because most warranties expire, you know, in the 12th month. And if we want, you know, we're going to be held accountable for the building and its functioning, then maybe we should not accept a building for 11 months until we have three seasons of, of operation in the building to know what's, what's going on with it, okay? So, I mean, that's the only suggestion I can offer, Mr. Carey, on that one, is just to delay acceptance of the building. The other question I have, either through the chair to Dr. Title or Mr. Cullen, any of these items, and again, I know this is only a shift from one line on a budget to another, but should any of these be bonded or would you recommend any of these items be bonded?
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think these fall into the bonding category. The, the sort of guidelines we've had from the town about that has been for larger dollar amount items to fall into that capital, non-recurring account. It's usually in the 200,000 to a million range. And of course, by, you know, if we move them into bonding, then it goes as a standalone through all the town bodies and the board really loses control over whether to do it or not. One of the advantages of having in the operating budget is that ultimately, at the end of the day, you know, the board can decide through the budget process whether it wants to keep it. If it goes out as a standalone, you lose control of it. So the ones, you know, we go for, you know, 200,000 and up, those are usually ones we can't absorb in here, and so we'll send those off for bonding. They also need to have, you know, a long lifespan. So that's sort of the rule of thumb that we've, you know, that we've used for it. So I'm not sure that any of these, you know, kind of fit that. I mean, you know, you're, you know, if you're going to really fix all the lighting in the, say, the parking lots at the, at the Ludlos, right? I mean, those, those could be long-term things, you know, in terms of the, the length of those, the life of those. But the dollar amount isn't high enough to, to trigger the, the bonding. And I also know the town's really trying to control their bonding. You know, debt service is a major driver in the town budget. So I think for all those reasons, I think we're probably better off keeping them here. But again, the board wants to try to go through a bonding with some of these, and, you know, that's what we would do.
Mrs. Cannelli?
I didn't know if, I mean, I spoke...
I'm sorry, Mrs. Brand, were you waiting? Okay.
I didn't know if anybody else had anything for Mr. Cullen, I don't.
I only have one question for Mr. Cullen. Is this all you asked for, or did you say there were more critical needs? And what were the dollar value that, that you asked for versus what was put in the budget?
Really want me to answer that?
I'll tell you.
Yes, I do.
Let Dr. Title tell you.
It's about a million one. And it was cut to the five, what is it, 558?
Yeah, we have a priority list.
So basically, yeah, we went through and I said, all right, you know, we're not going to be able to support this number. You got half this amount, tell me what the priorities are. And these are the ones that made the cut. And, you know, that's how it worked.
Mrs. Brand? I hadn't, yeah.
This is the painful part. I've given it some thought because I know where we are and I'm not happy about it. We had a blip on the screen, it was insurance costs. And the only way you can mitigate insurance costs is cross your fingers and hope people don't get the flu, they don't trip, et cetera. We, it was completely out of bounds. I am hoping that the rest of this year does not go that way. I'm also hoping that we don't have another year like this because we do have to absorb the cost. Now, that said, the only way to measure that and do anything that I think won't impact a student is to look at the number of employees you have. There's no way to do anything else. If you cut back programs, it has a direct impact on the student, and it also doesn't help you with your overall costs, not to the same degree, because we know the two drivers are employees and employee benefits. So what I've looked at is what we had for our last seven years and some of the changes that I've seen. So what I've written is on page 43, we have central office staff. I'm going to recommend we decrease by one. On page 109, we have director, supervisors, and managers in business services. I'm going to ask that two of those be consolidated into one. I would like to eliminate CAE, that $20,000. I would like to eliminate the Board of Ed workshops and conferences for $3,000. And I want to, at all costs, do our level best to preserve classroom teachers because I do think that's the core to what we do. I also would like to see our curriculum leaders become curriculum coordinators so they assume some teaching time, and it changes the structure, and I think it will help us so that we won't have to hire more teachers when we have an increase. And I don't know how the cost of those will all pan out because I, you know, they're different salaries, they're different benefit packages. But I know Dr. Title asked us for things that were very specific, so those are my specifics.
That is one thought that we can cast out for Tuesday. Mrs. Cannelli?
Do you want me to go through? Okay. Wasn't the fun part, so I was trying to get through it fast. Wasn't the fun part, so I was trying to get through it fast.
Let's get Mr. Convetito's question answered, and then you can ask further clarification.
Did you miss all of it, John, or you want me to go through the specifics? Central office consolidate, decrease by one employee in the administration.
Are you talking about the deputy superintendent, director of secondary, director of elementary?
I'm not going to be specific. I will leave that to you. But from one of those, drop one. Yes. And page 109, where it has director, supervisor, manager, and business services, you'll see a number of folks there.
It's not 109.
I have... Is it page 109? Maybe it is 109. I apologize. It's very... It's similar to... Oh, you're right. It's not page 109. I think it's... I didn't put my page down.
Page 44.
44. To decrease and consolidate and reorganize by decreasing by one there as well.
Which one?
Again, there's a... I'm narrowing it down to a cluster.
But it's 10964. Is that what you're looking at?
Where we have facilities.
She's trying to get the item number.
I'm trying to get the item number. It's page 44. What's the item number?
Hold on a second. I'll give it to you.
Right.
109, number 64, business services.
In one of those five?
Correct. Eliminate CAE, the $20,000. That actually wasn't... There was a Board of Ed $20,000. It wasn't written as CAE. It was... I can't remember. It was conference.
Dues and fees.
Dues and fees. Thank you. Board of Ed workshops and conferences, $3,000. I'd like to see what I'm saying if the board sacrificed first. Page 51, I think I already did that one. Oh, curriculum leaders. Have them bump down to curriculum coordinators, which inherent in that is an assumption they have take on teaching time, classroom, as well. And that's six.
And Mrs. Iacrona had a clarification question she wanted to ask you.
No, actually, it was to Dr. Tittle on the CAE thing. When you... When you... CAE, not having it, can you cost out what that's going to cost us in attorney's fees, not having that service to be able to just call up and ask questions?
We can make an effort at it. I mean, it really would require that...
I mean, if you think about the number of hours you guys spend calling up there...
Right.
We call up there.
Right. The policy part is really huge.
Yeah. You know, and... What the...
Yeah. If you end up paying the board's lawyer for every time we talk to CAE about policies, you may not end up saving anything.
Well, that's my point.
But that can be part of the information that you put together.
Yeah, that's what I want to see when you do that.
Right.
Mrs. Cannelli, and then Mr. Carey. You still have an interest. Mrs. Cannelli.
I did still have a number of questions. I'd like to whip through them quickly, because some of them might are in the realm of cuts I was considering. Others are things that will... I'm sure Dr. Tittle wouldn't be fully prepared to answer yet, but I want to throw them out there as topics, because I think next Tuesday is going to be a very fruitful meeting. One of the things I was curious... Two questions regarding transportation. What savings would we realize if we either eliminated extended-day kindergarten or reduced it to one day a week, leaving it so that there were a total of two days for early dismissal? This is all... Well, some of this, Dr. Tittle, is in the email I sent you, but I can rewrite it. So regarding extended day, is it... I'm also curious about if it's a straight swap. If one day of extended day were ended, and we look to add one day to the high school because they lost their late buses, is that a one-for-one swap, if that's a topic anyone's interested in talking about? I was also interested, as Mrs. Brand asked, in the cost breakdown of switching a full-time curriculum leader to instead be a curriculum coordinator, the cost comparison, if it's a .2 versus a .4 teaching load. I was thinking of that also from the point of view of this teacher evaluation program that's going to hit at some point, and we're going to... I mean, the idea that losing, for example, the curriculum leader in someone like social studies, if that gets replaced in the two high schools with two curriculum coordinators... Am I using the right word?
Yes.
Two curriculum coordinators, you know, that's putting more administrators in positions to be able to complete a tremendous number of evaluations that will be part of this.
That's actually the reverse. You actually will end up changing over from... To a department head structure, curriculum leader structure will not save you any money. And in fact, we're going to need more people to do evaluations, more time to do evaluations under the new model. We do not have sufficient personnel to carry out the mandates of the new teacher evaluation system. Our curriculum leaders do, as part of their job, evaluations, but that's not all that they do. So if you went to, you know, a couple .4s, one in each high school, where they're teaching three or something like that, you also have now eliminated all your coverage of the middle schools. Because remember, they cover middle school and high school. So the change over to curriculum coordinators, really going to reduce the amount of time that you have people able to do evaluations. The money is not going to work for that. You're going to have fewer people able to do them. I'm very concerned that we're not going to have enough people. They need administrative certification to do this, and you need time to do it. And I'm very concerned about our ability to carry that out with our existing staff, much less talking about cutting the amount of time. I just... I think that is incredibly short-sighted, as are a couple of these other suggestions. But I don't want to get into them all right now, because I'll say something I'll regret.
And actually, the idea was towards not being short-sighted. I thought it might be helpful if you instead had a number of people at the step-down from curriculum leader, so that there was someone in each building to help, even if it were only with a .2. So I recognize exactly what you're saying. I thought this might be a way to help address that, but...
And the response might be on Tuesday. Here's the pluses and minuses.
Correct, right. So moving on, another transportation question. This is... I'm sorry. I need clarification on this. Is there a state statute that mandates that, for example, for the ECC, that every student who's going there is required to be offered transportation to the ECC?
For the special education.
Right.
Component, correct? Not for the regular kids, right?
Right. So every three- and four-year-old who's in there is required to be offered transportation?
If they are there by virtue of IEP.
Right.
But we have students there who are typical peers. They are not offered transportation currently.
Okay.
They're required for us to consider transportation as a related service. Not all of the students at ECC actually take transportation, but we're required as a PPT to consider transportation as a related service.
But is it requ... Case in... I mean, I'm thinking of a child who was there for speech therapy and lived a quarter of a mile from it and was offered a bus. Is that something we are required to do?
Andrea, you better come up to the microphone.
Sorry.
It's a more nuanced answer than I thought.
Each PPT, the team that determines that child's unique educational needs under the law, is required to consider all of their unique educational needs. IDEA has defined transportation as a related service. Related service meaning a service required in order for the child to benefit from special education. So in that scenario, a child who lives a quarter of a mile, who's three years old, whose family can't get them to and from their services, says, "I can't get them to or from their services", we have to say, "In order to benefit from that service, we've got to get you here." And that's how it works at the preschool level. At the whole... At the level pre-K-12, that's how it works. But at the preschool, that's how that works.
Okay. Okay. I also had a question on page 71. There was $47,000 of conference and travel from business services.
I'm wondering if somebody asked that in the written questions.
Okay. All right, then, never mind.
Yeah, I think it was.
I was trying to read everyone else's questions, so if I missed one, sorry. I noticed for language arts that the professional development of $76,000, and since the only one that we've recently approved is the grades three through five, I was wondering if there was any explanation of why that much for professional development?
I don't know off the top of my head. Do you want to... Somebody want to take it? I don't have it off the top of my head.
Because I don't recall that it actually said it was only elementary. I just know it came under language arts.
Right. Well, the language arts...
Does it cost a research before you...
Go ahead, Anna, because some of it is in pre-K-5.
Yeah, I could speak to pre-K-5. We're continuing our professional development, because it just doesn't happen in one year for 11 schools for 230 teachers. So we're going to continue the professional development in Common Core. We are going to invest in handwriting materials, new writing units, all falling within the curriculum you've approved, and so that will require more professional development. And the whole shift to increasing the nonfiction text, the informational text in the classroom, is a big shift that we need to continue more professional development on. So it's under the umbrella of the new curriculum last year, but it's just massive PD for lots of schools and teachers. So we're going to continue to continue those efforts, but increase them as well.
So we're probably looking at a similar number after next year, when we have the next set of language arts.
All right. So what we have is...
Secondary, I think.
Yeah. That's like a combination item, the PD along with the curriculum development, because on page 138, it's broken out. The secondary is mostly curriculum development, because next year is when you're going to be getting the secondary curriculum.
Right.
Right? And there's a little money in there for workshops, but that's where your $76,000 comes from. It's a combination of professional development and curriculum development.
Okay.
That's why we broke it out back there. So it's... Yeah, it's quite possible that the curriculum development for language arts will go away and replaced with professional development in the future. Yeah.
There had been $381,000 budgeted for math and language arts texts, and I was just wondering, is that a number that you feel safe with regardless of which text gets approved? That they're all going to fall within a certain range, and so that's a safe number?
Yeah. We find that there's generally not a huge cost variation. And at least the variation is small enough that you wouldn't pick it on cost alone.
Right.
Right? So that's an estimate, you know, based on the typical textbook. It doesn't determine which book we use.
Okay. On page 61, there's a senior course subsidy for $15,000. 61.
Yeah, that's in the continuing education arena. We... It's seniors, as in senior citizens.
Ah.
We give a large discount to senior citizens who want to take adult ed classes.
Okay.
That's what that is. It's not senior...
I thought it was seniors in high school.
No. No, that's...
It's post-grad.
Yes.
All right. Moving along. The 3.5... On page 103, under pupil personnel services, there's 3.5 million for tuition, and I'm sure you've looked at it, but I feel the need to ask with such a large number. Is there something else that we can offer to prevent so much out-of-district movement?
Andrea, you're up. I should...
You're not without a cost.
That's correct. I also should point out that, you know, Andrea does a terrific job of doing everything we can to have students educated here. And relative to the size of the student population, I believe, in my experience, we have relatively low number of outplacements. But each one, of course, is quite costly, and we do have some programs to keep kids in. But I'll let her speak to other options that might be out there, because we're always interested.
And just before that, on your list of questions, was that your last one?
No. I have more, but I'm moving fast.
Yeah. Okay.
In terms of... If I were to suggest to the board a direction to go in to try to mitigate some of the tuition costs, I mean, certainly, there are some students who require very unique programming, and so this is not to say we would never place a student in a program of that ilk. I would tell you that what we need to... What we would need to create is what I would term a therapeutic day program, probably beginning between, you know, at fourth grade, upper elementary, all the way through to the high school, to meet the needs of students with serious anxiety and depression issues, because a large portion of the students who are currently outplaced in day programs, who are academically quite able, but they're... The anxiety and depression-related issues that they face every day make our environments the larger environments, the more bustling environments, very difficult for them to manage. And they would need the resources of... They would need space, and they would need the resources of clinically... Very clinically savvy staff, including consultating psychiatrists, family counseling components, to allow them to access our level of curriculum. So it would be a... Yes, I think we could do it for less money than each individual tuition plus transportation costs, but it is not without cost.
Right. On that topic, how many students are you talking about? So in terms of what kind of space are you talking about? And piggybacking on that, is this a situation where their needs also need to have them more in isolation? As in, I mean, case in point, I don't know how much room St. Emory's has. Is that the kind of thing that can serve as an alternative high school? And there's also space for something like this that could be carved out? I don't know... I don't know exactly how much space is taken up there, but I didn't know if it... As I said, how many students are you talking about? And do they also need to be apart from...
I think the same...
Like not entering and leaving at the same time? I don't know.
I wouldn't recommend that we have the alternative high school in its current iteration plus a therapeutic day program in that building because of the way it's...
Right.
That the way that building is. Certainly, there might be opportunities to split the time you use, so use it, you know, have a separate schedule so that some use it in the morning, and, you know, really make some massive changes to program. Ultimately, I think we would need a building the size of St. Emory's or a space the size of St. Emory's, six classrooms or so. It's going to be a lot of office or small consultation, therapeutic spaces. You're going to need to have programs with some level of music and art therapy kinds of things. That's just kind of, you know, really thinking about how to put that kind of program together. It's not just straight academics. You really have to think about how to help teach students through what I would term more of a cognitive behavioral approach to master their anxiety, to master and be able to stay in math class even in the presence of that anxiety, which for some students is bone-crushing. So...
Can I just ask a quick follow-up to that?
Mrs. Cannelli, a follow-up from Mrs. Iacrona.
When you say that you think that would be cheaper to run, obviously, of the startup capital costs, but even in terms of employee personnel, have you factored in benefits, pension, that type of stuff, too? Like running it out?
I have not done the exercise to build this program to that level.
Right.
You know, to really put it to paper in terms of staffing, who we would need, what we would need, what their certifications would need to be, simply because I didn't think we were going to go down that road. But I could put together, you know, at least from the basics of what a current tuition costs and the level of staffing, based on some average numbers, you know, it would be quite an exercise. It would not be cheap in year one. Space is at a premium. They're all kind of... Having searched for ECC space for 10 years, trust me, you know, space becomes the primary issue, and then everything else falls on top of that. But I... My sense is not only could we save and bring students who are currently outplaced back, back, we could save a fair number of students from going out in the first place if we gave them some of that intensity of instruction. And personally, I feel like the Fairfield Public Schools, we can do a better job keeping the kids here, as is, you know, I think the program we created for children with autism that kept students in district has resulted in students achieving better and being able, more functional as they move up in the grades. So, I think we could do that again with this population of kids.
I'm just thinking towards the future, and since we don't have any money for capital startup costs, I'm wondering if maybe that is something that you ought to start to consider should the opportunity arise in the future. For example, maybe the town would be interested in carving out space at the Turner site when that finally gets developed, or maybe they would be interested in recapturing some space from Oldfield School in conjunction with the senior center where there's a for-profit daycare, you know, just to give them food for thought for future when they want to consider options and saving things. So, as one board member here, I would encourage you to maybe work something up so that they have food for thought for the future.
Be happy to.
Ms. Kelly, continue.
My next question, this is actually, I don't know if Mr. Curry, through the chair to Mr. Curry, if you would remember this. I thought part of our long-range facilities plan had been for the purchase of St. Emory's, and I see, obviously, we're still paying that rental cost. Does anyone know, is that just something that because of cost, we'd had to...
I don't remember that.
I know it was in there because I read it somewhere, but there was that idea of purchasing property for the alternative high school.
Maybe Mr. Cullen or Dr. Doc can recall the outcome of that. I know that was in there, but I don't think that went over well with the First Selectmen at the time.
It's always noted in the long-range facilities plan that we have these rental spaces that, you know, need to be continually looked at. The contract that we have or that's being worked on and finalized with St. Emory's through the town has a purchase option in it. Obviously, that would be a town decision. The Board of Ed can't purchase it. So, that would involve the town laying out, you know, X number of dollars, whatever fair market value is for it, and if they were to do that, then we would be able to wipe the rental cost off of our plate. We would love to have that happen, but it's not something we can just do.
Okay. Sorry. I was wondering, on page 21, item 303, there's something about the occupational physical therapists anticipating a contractual, contractual movement there, and I was wondering why that increase wasn't included in the wage and benefit reserve? As other contracts were. So, was there something particular to this?
Well, it's not a labor union contract where we have to be kind of somewhat opaque about the percent we're putting in there. I mean, it's a contract that we work out directly with the provider organization. So, it's not like collective bargaining where it might go to arbitration, or, you know, there's a big to-do around it.
We don't have FTV. Okay.
Right.
Okay. Next question. What would you, what would your reaction be to the idea, because again, like Mrs. Brandon, like everyone here, I'm trying to look for some specific suggestions of where we can make cuts, and I also keep thinking of the teacher evaluation program. If we were hypothetically to cut a guidance counselor at each high school, now, I know there's three houses, they've got nine counselors, and shift the load so that three counselors had six, a share of 600 approximately, three had a share of 600, then two guidance counselors had a share of 400, and that also house administrator is then designated for additional evaluation. Is that a kind of future structure that you can see working?
Well...
In other words, trying to find ways that using already existing staff to somewhat free them up. So, this was, that was kind of a two-prong...
Yeah.
...to get a throw at you.
Right. I mean, what you'd be doing is, you know, you'd be cutting, you know, you would be increasing the load of each counselor.
Yes.
Obviously, so that's a service reduction to kids, and that's the downside to that, obviously. And, you know, as the high schools increase in enrollment going forward, that problem will just continue to get, to get worse. So, that would be the one downside, you know, obviously, I would see there'd be a pretty significant reduction in counseling loads, you know, I mean, the counseling services we provide are obviously directly related to the caseload each counselor has. So, you know, this teacher, and by the way, administrator evaluation plan is incredibly labor-intensive, and I should point out, the people that do the administrator evaluations are the deputy superintendent, the director of elementary education, and the director of secondary education that have been proposed to be cut. Okay? So, I want to point that out. That is a huge additional load there. This teacher and administrative evaluation plan, I don't think people understand the impact this is going to have on our supervisory staff as well as on the teachers. And to think about reducing in those areas, there's just no way around it. And I'm not sure that, you know, I don't believe necessarily that we need to add administrators. I'm not putting in for additional curriculum leaders or anything like that, but I think we are going to need additional staff. I think something where we have some teachers who perform some of the roles in the evaluation plan is a good idea, and it's permitted under certain circumstances, but we are going to need more people doing evaluations, not less. I'm very concerned about that along, where this is going. So, I don't know. I'd be concerned about the service reduction, you know, the guidance counselor part of that equation. That'd be my concern. Again, you know, brainstorming, I, you know...
Well, again, that's why...
I will, I do want to respond to your kindergarten point, though, way back that you made.
Okay.
Because we had, we have, as you know, one of our initiatives this year was to look and review the kindergarten program, and, you know, we're getting there on that, and we do know that one day a week of the bus situation for the Wednesday is about $46,000. Okay? We also believe there would be significant savings if we went to full-day kindergarten and eliminated the extended day entirely, which would be more time on task and lower costs. So, I'm, you know, I'm willing to put that on the table. We've got, it's a little premature. We're working with a group of teachers on that now, but since we're moving in some other directions that I'm less excited about, you know, I think that, you know, I mean, if you want to talk to Common Core and time on task, then I think we've got to put kindergarten on the table. And, you know, I mean, you guys throwing all kinds of things out, I mean, I'm thinking, you know, if you want to say to me, you know, come back with a million dollars in cuts, I'll give you a million dollars in cuts on Tuesday. If that's what you want to do. So, you know, give me the direction, because it's all over the place, and I don't know, you know, one person suggests it, eight people may think it's a great idea, not a great idea.
Which is why I'm trying to get off of the questions and on to...
Right. There's just a lot of different things that are out here to cost out, and if they're not going to happen, you know...
Whereas a board, we could give direction to Dr. Title rather than having him have to cost out individual ideas. One last question.
One last question.
This is going to be a quick one, right?
It is a quick one.
Right.
Unless it has a complicated answer. But in looking at the cost per student, and I only did this for the elementary school, I would be curious about an explanation, because based on, and this is starting on page 93, if you take straight-out division, the number of students anticipated for next year into the amount that's budgeted for that school, there's quite a disparity across some of our elementary schools from a low of per-student cost. The lowest was Osborne Hill at $7,697, spent per student up to $10,820 at Dwight, and I find that a very disturbing, and I fully recognize that one thing immediately I can put my finger on is the central, the administrator, that the principal, you know, they don't have any control over the fact that someone's in a smaller school versus a larger school, and it could still be a comparable salary. But that's still a $3,000 swing.
Right. There's all kinds of potential explanations for that, because all of our staffing ratios follow a formula. Right? I mean, we've got the class size guidelines that, you know, maybe you want to revisit those and, you know, but, so sometimes it depends on how the enrollment falls at a given school. You can have a school with the same number of children as another one, and depending on how they sort themselves out in the grid, you might have two or three additional sections in one school versus another. If your bigger class, if your larger number of kids is in your lower grades where the class size caps are lower, you're going to have to spend more money. That's one thing. Second thing is, we've got several schools with special populations in them. You've heard about the SSC programs. Those are not equivalently distributed. Dwight is an example, right? The other thing that you have going on is you've got a variation in experience level among the staff from school to school. You see that in the change in the, you know, some of these numbers for staffing that go from school to school. If a school has, for whatever reason, three or four retirements, and then they're maybe replaced with younger teachers, then that school's cost will go down, whereas another school might not have that happen. So, and you've got all the fixed costs for a school that also varies, you know, tremendously. So, there's a lot of it. I think the, the question is, you know, do we provide equity in terms of the services at each school? The answer is yes, because we follow the staffing formula for, across all the schools, not just for certified teachers in the classroom, but also for special education teachers. You know, we recently revised that for parent professionals. We've, you know, that's a formula, but it's also individual student-based. You've got a couple of very involved students. They need one-on-one pairs. That drives your costs up. So, it's very formulaic, and the 11 elementary schools in particular, they keep a close watch to make sure that their school's getting exactly what they deserve.
Thank you. I'm going to make one comment, and then Mrs. Iacono wants to make a comment or a question, is I'm almost sensing that we're coming back to Mr. Curry's point of view, and rather than perhaps try and decide on where the majority is for which program that was suggested tonight by which board member, whether, as Dr. Title asked, perhaps we're, we find agreement on a number and let him take all of the ideas that are thrown out tonight and perhaps others that he might have because he doesn't like some of the ideas, and come back to us on Tuesday. But, Mrs. Iacono.
Well, I'm happy to do both. I opened with the fact that I wouldn't be able to support, unfortunately, the increase that was put before us. I would be in favor of us getting recommendations from the superintendent for a reduction in the amount of $1.5 million. If you'd like quickly some of my ideas to just throw out there that I haven't already mentioned, I can do that in about 30 seconds.
Okay.
I'd be, I'd be interested in looking at secretary on clerical staff district-wide, where we can consolidate jobs. I know we've looked at this over the past, and we're able to cut back through attrition. Is there anything else we could look at? Sports programs, I'm assuming pay-to-play will be back on the table since it has been in the past. I'm not a big fan of this. I think it's a tax. However, I don't want to eliminate sports, so I would be open to hearing about that, but what I would want to see in that is a sort of breakout of, if we wanted to pass along rental fees to students that are participating in sports that require those, a breakout of what that would be. Also, maybe instead of just pay-to-play, maybe it's pay-to-participate, and if you're in drama club or whatever club, you know, maybe there's an activity fee for that. I'd be interested in an examination of the world language programs up at the high schools in terms of the future needs of language as we move into a whole new world, a global world, and maybe there are some languages that we offer that, even though they have high enrollment, maybe those aren't languages that are generally used or popular, and I don't know from an educational standpoint, and would not encourage people to enroll in other languages that are more modernly used. I'd be interested in exploring with the First Selectmen's Office, raising rental fees for our buildings by 10%, and that is everything I have on my list. Thank you.
That's 90 seconds. I think you did very well.
Thank you.
Mr. Curry, you want to go for a...
You still have me in queue for some questions there, Mrs. Dwyer. I know you're trying to wind down.
Oh, I did have a queue for questions. Fair enough.
And I was in line.
No, we are staying here as long as the majority of the board wishes to.
I appreciate that. And I do apologize, I believe, Mr. Dwyer, you said that my answer to the, what the dollar reduction to 4% in 305 would be, and I just haven't been able to find it.
Yeah, it's right here.
Which, where is that, guys?
It's about 1.3 million or 2.0 million, depending on...
I have the page if you want it. It's board budget questions, the 300 to 600 series.
Okay.
One, two, three pages in, the backside, and about in the middle of the page.
There's no backside because, do you have double-sided?
Yeah, I have double-sided. You guys don't have double-sided? Do you have it?
What, what number?
Right there, in the parentheses, 1.277728.
I'm having trouble.
Oh, okay.
Other question. This one, the 300 to 600 series.
300 to 600, right? Okay, I got page one.
Ages 60 to 92.
Two, three. Page three?
On the backside. Flip it over.
Page four.
Yeah. Oh, that's what comes after three.
It is time for us to call up, yes. While, while Mr. Curry's studying that, you have a quick comment? Mrs. Brand?
Yeah, I do. As we're looking at this, you know, I had talked to Dr. Title earlier this evening, and, you know, he was looking for specifics. So, I'm sticking my neck out, and I'm giving you specifics. That said, in my mind, again, it's with a priority, first and foremost, to try and preserve what we're giving our students. That's my top priority. Anything we can do to try and ensure that, I think, is the most important thing. Second thing, the thing that hit us, and we are going to continue to see is an issue, is going to be pensions and benefits, and the only way you adjust that is with the number of employees. So, again, we're looking, we're talking here about programs and kids, what we offer kids. Unless there's a high employee component to it, I don't think it's going to have the impact that you think.
Now, Mr. Curry.
Thank you, Mrs. Dwyer. Couple of comments and some of the things I've heard through the discussion, and then I'll get back to my questions, and thank you. I do have the numbers now, the 4% was 1277728 and 2022411. Class size, we have discussed this. We discussed it around contract time, and we've discussed it in general board discussion over the years, and my recollection on that has been a very affirmative message from the district and our educational team that the worst place to increase class size is going to be the elementary level, and at this point, with a lot of the things that we are looking and endeavoring to do between Common Core, school improvement plans, and, you know, the instructional, I'm sorry, not the instructional improvement plan, but that's also something I want to get to, as well as a lot of the testing and data-driven things we're doing right now. I would be reticent to look at class size first, particularly at that lower level, until we kind of get a bearing for some of these things that we're going to have to deal with. If that's where we have to go, and the administration feels that's the direction they want to look at, that's fine, but I do have a concern there because I think that, especially at the lower levels, it becomes more challenging when more kids... As we do continue down the path on our instructional improvement program, that might be a possibility, but I want to hear from the administration when they think the teachers are ready in terms of their abilities to maybe expand in terms of the amount of students as a result of the improvement in their skill set. In terms of some of the specific cuts I've heard, I am recommending that we set a bar and set a limit, but my preference would be to, as Mr. Dwyer said, have our professionals take a number away from us tonight, in understanding, hopefully, if we can get this far with what the number's going to be for the ensuing years, so they can begin to plan, and then come back to us with what they feel is their closest to the situation would be the most prudent way to proceed. And obviously, there's some ideas here. I think they ought to be explored, but I also think that we should be given, you know, a series of options that are, again, doing the least harm. When I hear about administration, I do get concerned. It's a politically popular topic. There's a perception among a lot of our elected officials that administration's top-heavy, and it's an easy target, but we have close to, I believe, 1,500 employees, correct me if I'm wrong, and we are servicing 10,000-plus customers. Those employees are all going through a new evaluation program, which needs to be fair and orderly for our unionized employees. We want to create a scenario where we're using that, and I think it's coming very quickly, probably too quickly in a lot of people's opinion, but we want to have a scenario where that is handled, I think, properly. We're going through an instructional improvement program. We're beginning to use sophisticated data analysis in our classrooms and a lot more testing to be able to improve achievement, and we've got this little Common Core boogeyman that's sitting here right in front of us. So, I don't know if the right answer is to start removing leadership when we need leadership for all these initiatives, and I do agree that I want to have services as close to the students as possible, but the only way we're going to improve achievement in this district, or in any public education or private education system, is to improve instruction. And the teachers aren't going to improve instruction all by themselves. There has to be some type of ratio. One of the things I would like to try to get by next Tuesday, if it's not too onerous, I'm supposing it's in here, but if we can have it broken down simply for us, is what our management-to-employee ratios are. A lot of the big corporations I work with, it's still 10 to 1. Sometimes they're stretching out to 20 to 1. I know our principals are getting helped by instructional improvement teachers in the elementary level to supervise a lot more people than that.
No, they're not administrators.
But they're not administrators.
They're not supervising.
I understand the difference, but...
Now, it's easy to figure out. We have 1,500 employees, and we have about 40 administrators, so what's the ratio? 35 to 1?
About 35 to 1. So, in terms of a well-managed organization, that's deficient in my mind. Now, I understand that, again, it's an easy target, and it might make sense to do some of these things, but I would be reticent to do that without an understanding from our administration of what's going to happen. Kindergarten, it's fascinating. We're on the, we're on the, we're on the train for full-day... the, we're on the, we're on the train for full-day kindergarten again. And I would caution our team and remind our team that we had a recommendation from an outside source to go the opposite direction, to extended-day kindergarten, to save money. So if we're going to look at full day to save money, I like to see how much we're going to save if we go the other way and eliminate full day and go to extended day. The challenge is this, unless we can tell the state what age these kids can come in here, and we can have a more extensive debate on kindergarten if we want to, probably not going to happen by Tuesday.
I'm ready.
But four years and nine months, four years and nine months to whatever age the ceiling is, six or seven in the same classroom, is a big range for those kindergarten teachers to deal with. It's a lot for the kids to deal with. I'm all for rigor and driving, but the state requires them to take a nap after 6 hours and 15 minutes for a reason. So do we want to be paying to have them sleeping on the floor when a great many of them can be home with a parent? And that's part of the debate. So I, I just want to make sure that if we start going down this path, we understand what the benefits were to our extended-day program as it used to be formulated. And I do have some current concerns about how it is now, and we've been waiting for some time to hear about a new curriculum structure for this. And if we're going to have a presentation on that, I'm willing to be open-minded. But this has been a discussion that has repeated in this district, and the district has looked to go in both these directions. So I'm open-minded. We have to cut the budget somewhere. But I am concerned because there are some challenges there that have been outlined in graphic detail before Dr. Title became our superintendent. All right.
About to wrap up?
About to wrap up. Just wanted to get back to my insurance questions for retirees, to make sure I understood the answers here. Customers I asked were how much are, are no longer employee retirees who pay 100 percent of their insurance, which is what it looks like in generally here, paying and what are they costing us? And it looks like we're losing $817,348 a year on this proposition. So we are providing a health benefit to people who are retired. They pay for the premium, but the liabilities are exceeding that premium by a very large chunk of what we're talking about cutting here. My question is, are we required to do this contractually?
Yes.
Now, I see that it says yes for the teachers. So this is, one of the things I would like to try to divide out if it pops up next Tuesday, is how much of that panel is part of the state requirement, so we can see what the unfunded requirement is that the state's putting on us here.
Well, the, the responsibility to offer retirees' health insurance at their cost of the premium is built into the teacher's contract.
So is it contractual or is it a state requirement? Because I understood it as a state contract.
It's built into the teacher's contract. That little yellow book?
No, no, I'm familiar with it.
Yeah, page 23.
Yeah. I spent some time over. That's why I wanted to double-check that.
Yeah, page 23. Whether it's contractually in the other bargaining units, I didn't look. I only looked at the teacher's one.
And I'm not saying that if we've made a commitment to our teachers or other bargaining units or other employees that we just want to pull the rug out, but we do negotiate our contracts with our bargaining units on a periodic cycle. And if we are upside-down in this endeavor, we have to look at, is this one of the things that we are going to be able to afford to continue to offer, because as Mrs. Brand said, it does not directly impact achievement for our students in the classroom. So if, if we're locked into this for the next two years, I understand. But I think that this is something that we have to look at as a board moving forward because it's a big cost, and I suspect that based on how we do from a actuarial perspective, from time to time, it could be a much bigger cost. So that's, that's all my questions, Mr. Dwyer.
And as Mr. Fattabean mentioned at the, kind of somewhere in the beginning, as we collectively as a board, two years from now, say what are our goals as we're meeting with the next contract negotiations, that would be an idea to put on the table and decide whether that's a priority goal or not. But that's a subject I honestly think is going to have to be addressed when the, when the contract comes up.
And just one more, if you know mine, and I'm, if, I don't know if you're moving on to questions, but I would be open to asking the administration to come back to us on what 4 percent would look like. I'd be open to discussion with Mrs. Brand if she's got a number that's a little higher than 1.5 as to why she'd want to be there versus the 1.277.
Did you mention Mrs. Iacono?
I'm sorry, Mrs. Iacono. So I'd be open to that discussion.
I can answer why I picked 1.5 if you want.
But if I, if I could get Mr. Lou, he wanted to make a comment?
Sure.
Yeah, thank you. I, I didn't know if we were going around one last time to talk about what we wanted also. But page 53 through 56, I think, at all the elementary schools, the added clerical support and clerical extras, I'd like to see those, again, consolidated or reduced or eliminated. And I just want to say one last thing. Obviously, there's differences of opinions on, on the administration and central office and where cuts should go, but I think at least to come to the table and, and for all of us to meet ourselves halfway, this has to be a shared experience. If we're only going to cut programs and cut things and not cut any type of central office cuts, I really think that's just a bad precedent. And, you know, I know we had an operational audit, and I know it said that we were at a reasonable level or possibly just under a reasonable level of administration, but that was at that time. We're here now. That, that operational audit didn't embrace this particular budget. And I think to Mrs. Brand's point, also, if, if we don't start dealing with how that also affects pensions and health, then we're, we're missing the ball completely and we're going to end up penalizing the students in the cuts that we have to make.
I haven't asked any questions or made any comments. I'd like to do one. Dr. Title would like to make a comment, and then Mrs. Iacono would like to make a comment relative to Mr. Carey's answer, and then we can go to other board members. And I would think that the conversation ought to focus on not so much, well, here's my idea for how to get there, but what the number should be so that we have a target that a majority of the board members would agree with. I would only remind the board that something that they are fully aware of is that on a 4.86 percent increase, the entire budget is based on a 0.82 percent increase. And so there are, I have no doubt that there have been service reductions that have already been recommended to us and then just aren't quite obvious to us, with the exception of the answer to the capital budget relative to only half of the projects or less than half of the projects that were felt to be needed for proper maintenance of our buildings are actually in this year's budget. So while I appreciate the 2.0 number or the 1.5 number, I, I just can't imagine that we would not severely restrict program quality when we aimed at that high of a number. However, Dr. Title and then Mrs. Iacono.
I just want to point out that this is going to happen very quickly between now and Tuesday. That's when you want to make this decision, which is, you know, we've, we've just debated in the past about having to make these decisions over, say, a month period of time, you know, between April and May when we make the cuts. Now we're looking at some pretty significant decisions, and we've got a decent chance. I mean, we don't know for sure, but somebody asked this question, and it's answered in there. You know, one of the steps we took to reduce our health insurance cost was we put the carrier out to bid. That has the potential to save us a lot of money. And, you know, we can't take advantage of that right now by Tuesday because we're not going to know what those results are by Tuesday. You know, maybe in six or eight weeks we'd have the results. Certainly by the time this came back from the town bodies, we would know what that is. And I'd hate to see us, you know, commit to, you know, whatever level of service reduction will happen. And at these numbers you're talking about, there will be service reductions, no matter what you do with some of the non-service areas. When this potential savings that impacts nobody is, is yet to materialize. The other thing is, you know, health insurance trends can turn around in two and three months. We already know the December numbers were better than prior months, and it started to turn. It could be in three months, again, with the blessing of the town bodies, you know, that we don't have to pile $5.4 million into our pension, into our, our health insurance account, and we don't have to have these, you know, doomsday discussions. So I just don't know, obviously, I'll bring in whatever you want on a very quick basis. I just don't know if we, you know, on the timing of, of the whole thing. So that's just my thoughts on it, and obviously, we'll, we'll bring you whatever you need and abide by whatever decisions you make.
Mrs. Iacono wanted to make a comment, and I wonder if then if we could go around to each board member and say, so where are you on this conversation relative to giving guidance?
No, no.
No, no, please. Mrs. Iacono and then-
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Carey had asked the question of where I came up with the 1.5, and the answer is twofold. One, when I opened my conversation, I said I was willing to go down to the 4 percent, which is 1.3 essentially. And I figured if I had administration look at $1.5 million, if we couldn't agree on that 1.5, we would at least achieve the savings to get down to 1.3. So I sort of left that at some wiggle room. And quite frankly, I do this knowing that we'll probably still save $1 million in, in, or could save up to maybe $1 million. Maybe that's too big a number, I don't know, in renegotiating our insurance carrier. And I still think we're going to get, I still think, so that would be a total of about, let's just say, best-case scenario, we'd get $1 million in savings on the insurance. And if we cut 1.5, that saves 2.5 off of here, and that puts us in a better position for keeping our budget intact. That's my rationale. That's my thought. And that's how I got to where I am. And I just, like I said when I opened my statements, we're just in a position where we need to rethink how we're delivering program for the future, and it's a rough place to be. And unfortunately, the mandates aren't going to allow us to go after administration as much as that's a great soundbite.
Okay. Now, if we could go to each board member, Mr. Lou, you want to make a comment, and then if you could give guidance as to where you are thinking at the moment.
I was just going to ask the superintendent if, you know, how, how long would it take to put that out to bid? To do, I'm sorry?
Oh, or how long is it?
It is, it is out to bid. The health insurance is out to bid, and we don't expect returns until March, give or take.
They may come back in in February, but then the Aon has to do a lot of work with the numbers and determine which carriers meet the requirements and so forth. It's, it's pretty complicated. And then we'd also have to work with each of our bargaining units to ensure that they would agree to it. So I think it's one of those things that probably is going to present itself. We'll have a pretty good ballpark number, probably right around the time that we're going to the town bodies with this budget. That'd be my guess. March timeframe.
A reminder that this is a town-led bid, not a school district-led bid. They are bidding the health insurance on behalf of both the town employees and the Board of Ed employees.
Right.
Do you have comments that you want to make as to where we are on a, are we staying with the budget as is, or are we going as high as Mr. Carey has mentioned, or Mr., or do you want to pass and-
Well, we can't stay with the budget as is.
So what's your number?
I, I think, I think we should, we should look at $1 million at least, if not more. I'd like to see what the superintendent comes back with. I, I can't just flat-out say that I'm going to approve that number based on, before seeing what it come, you know, what the superintendent comes back with. Right now, as I said, you know, I'm hearing, well, everyone's expressed how they have differences of what they think should and should not be cut. You know, I don't think, if, if the cuts don't fall in the way that I think they need to fall to benefit the education of our district, then I, I wouldn't, it wouldn't matter how much we're going to cut.
Thank you. Mrs., Mr. Convatito.
The only direction I can give you is, is what I've tried to suggest and allude to in the, in the last year, is we need to look at this budget in a different sense, and you need to look at all-encompassing. We need to look at facility usage. I can't rent Penn Field Pavilion for less than $800 for four hours, okay? I can't get a room at the library without paying a fee, okay? So I would like to see the income side looked at as well as the expense side. I think that, and so my direction is, look at, look at revenue where revenue is possible. If that's pay-to-play, if that's hanging a Whole Foods sign on a scoreboard, then that's hanging a Whole Foods sign on a scoreboard with corporate sponsorship on our athletic fields. I, I think everything is on the table at this point, okay? And I, and I think the last thing we want to do is cut services to our stakeholders. So I, I think, you know, that would be, you know, the bottom line is, is there's a better way to skin a cat, that we can do it if that's full-day kindergarten or, or, or extended-day kindergarten. We need to see all those options. But I think everything has to be on the table.
But without a number in mind. Mrs. Connelli.
I actually agree with Mrs. Iacono's idea of the 1.5. And getting back to Mr. Lou's point, it's just a reminder, and actually, Mrs. Iacono had said this a few months ago, and I thought it was a well-phrased reminder, that Dr. Title came to us with the superintendent's budget. As of Tuesday, it's ours. So we have gone to him as the professional, that we are paying well to advise us, but then we will tweak it as, as we will. So he has his recommendation. I value it. I have my own ideas as well. And we will make that budget our own effective Tuesday. But I think it makes sense that, that, you know, he take the reins in terms of coming forward with the first list of suggestions. I do agree with the 1.5. I can see us easily siding to put some of it back, but I think, you know, we do have to think politically. I think that sends an important message to the town that we have taken responsible steps. I think that the conversation led by Mr. Carey is going to resonate with the town, and it certainly should. This is not a spend-thrift board. We're recognizing that while we embrace Dr. Title's ideas, that the town simply isn't in the position to do this and won't do this. So I would agree with that specific number. The one question I have is, and obviously, Dr. Title, you've taken notes while we've been speaking, would you welcome, want, I don't want to waste your time because, as you point out, you have a very fast turnaround time on this, some of the various ideas that we've had, would you be interested in our sending them to you for reaction? Because otherwise, on Tuesday, if we're still thinking of some of our own ideas and we're coming to you, say, well, how much would this save instead of that idea? It might be easier if we got them to you tomorrow for you to consider, or would you-
There have been a lot thrown out tonight, but if you think that perhaps one got lost in the shuffle of Dr. Title's notes, board members ought to feel free to send in so that he knows what you're thinking.
Yeah, that's fine. You can send them in. I'm sure I have a number of note-takers out there that know exactly what's been suggested and will be reminding me.
Mrs. Gerber, do you want to go next, or?
Sure. I'll go next. Yeah, I, I think 1.5 makes sense as a starting-off point, especially because there's a really good chance that we won't all agree on maybe even more than a few of the suggestions that Dr. Title comes up with, but at least it's a starting-off point. And so I'm, I'm fine with that.
Mrs. Brand, or Mr. Fattabean, are the two remaining, other than myself? The microphone?
Well, this is going to sound a little strange for me, because I would usually support a cut. And I believe the problem I have with that in this instance is that, in my view, the big aspect of the increase is due to the unusually large benefit cost. So that means, my hope with that would be sort of a one-year aberration. So by cutting your budget in one year to try and, to compensate- So by cutting your budget in one year to try and compensate for that one-year aberration, you're going to reduce programs and services that may not be beneficial in the long run. So what I would sort of see, or like to think, of taking a more longer-term view, and saying we pay a little more now, take some hit, maybe a million dollars, not 1.5, but not, so, and next year, make a commitment that we're gonna come in at 2.5, 3%. And we have more planning time in which to make decisions as to how we're gonna do that. If we do it now, in this short period of time, my fear is that the planning and the decisions made may not be the best because of the time factor. And I would rather pay a little more now to make sure that we're not compromising the educational benefits, and make a commitment that next year, we're really gonna take it more seriously and make a planning a little more in advance to trim it at a 2%, 3% level, and make those decisions in a more time, in a more considered fashion. I mean, that's sort of my view.
Mrs. Brand, I think, has not commented on this subject yet?
Yeah.
In terms of a number and all that.
The, when the number is huge, and it scares me, quite frankly. It scares me more because of the impact I think it's gonna have on the town and the reaction that it's gonna generate. If we look at it, it is once again being driven by employees, employee benefits, and health insurance, and it's not a heck of a lot else. The suggestions I gave tonight were about employees. I'll be surprised if that amount even equates to $500,000 total. It's not a heck of a lot. And I'm very well aware of it, because I'm looking at trying to get some savings where I think we can survive, we can still function without having a detrimental impact. I also don't want this board to make a huge decision because of a horrible year. We've had a bad year. I agree with Dr. Title. I don't think that we will see something, and I'm hoping to God we don't, but we shouldn't see a trend that was, it went like into 20%. It was off the charts. So I don't want to see that big a shift that quickly. And I also want to have the opportunity to be more thoughtful about it. If the town wants to cut us, fine, but I am not inclined to support that big a cut. I think barely 0.8% of this, which I think is just around the mill, is, is just, that's cutting it so close that we're doing nothing. And I think we're selling ourselves short. I was looking at something like 500,000, maybe 700, but I really am reticent to do it, quite frankly, because what's generating this big push and this increase was out of our control.
Now, as you know, we do not have an action item on the agenda tonight, so these are comments to give, I'll say consensus, direction to Dr. Title. Mr. Carey, you want to make a comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Drive. Just as a follow-up, I guess I started, happy to finish before you anyway, I know you're gonna have comments as well. I would accept Mrs. Iacono's idea of the 1.5 with a goal of agreeing on the 4% or the 1.3, or just south of 1.3. I would also like to bring forward at the meeting where we want to be moving forward. What the suggestion I've made is 3% cap next year, 2% moving on outside of extraordinary circumstances. If other board members have different ideas, a higher or lower number, I do welcome that discussion still, but I think that we have to demonstrate to the rest of this community where we're gonna go. And we can certainly have a good discussion on Tuesday night on some man's point and some of the other members' points, how much, how fast. This is the, the way we're gonna step down, and I think we have to have a commitment so everyone on our team knows where we're gonna be moving forward.
Okay. At the moment, I think we have about three members...
Point of information?
Go ahead.
We actually, as a board, cannot predetermine a cap for future boards up, so just so we're...
Yeah, correct, yeah. No legislative body can make a decision that binds a future legislative body. That doesn't mean there isn't policy that gives guidance, but each elected board can change that.
To that point, and I understand what you're saying, Mr. Brand saying, you're saying, Mr. Drive, but this board can make its intentions known. If a future board wants to change those intentions, it's the only way our team's gonna be able to plan. Certainly, every decision that the last three or four boards have made could potentially be changed if this board did not want to honor them, but that typically isn't what happens.
At the moment, it seems as though we have three board members who have expressed doubt that we could get more than a million dollars, and some have said zero, or 500,000, or a million, in terms of, without serious degradation to our program. I think the high limit has so far been two, a couple at one to one and a half. So that's a pretty broad range for the superintendent to be working with.
I got the idea.
Okay.
I'm thinking that, you know, we'll come up with like a million-five, and if people don't like it, they'll not accept it, or scale it back, or substitute something, or...
I think that's good, it gives us options.
Whatever. I also think you ought to move the meeting to the high school.
We, we...
You're gonna have...
Perhaps word will get out.
Constituency here.
Perhaps word will get out, that is true, and so that's something that we might want to think about.
Find a bigger location for it.
Why don't we wrap up with final comments? Mr. Convetito and Mr. Liu, you have final comments?
Yeah, the only thing I would ask, and again, not to even put more of a constraint on it, but I think that whatever that number comes out to, that you get down on paper, that needs to be out on the website and made public before the meeting, so that people are aware of what we're looking at.
I don't know if that's gonna be possible, to be honest with you. This is a very, very quick thing. Normally, when we do cuts, as I did two years ago, we try to get as much input from the people close to the ground as possible. I hate to sit here and make decisions on things without getting input from a large number of people, and I think, right now, the best I'm gonna be able to do is probably hand it to you at the meeting. I really don't see that's gonna be practical. There is a lot of other work to do in this district, other than do this. This is completely out of the blue.
Did you raise your hand, Mr. Liu? Mr. Liu, and then Mrs. Cannelli?
I think we should...
Mrs. Brand.
I think we should reconsider the agenda for the next meeting, because I know we've got a couple of other items on there. I don't know how long they're gonna take, but it seems to me that this should be the first thing up, and because the evening could go long.
We have three business items on the agenda, the Ludlow building specs, the policies, and the budget. Those are the only three items on the agenda. Mrs. Cannelli, and then...
The agenda's out. The agenda's already out. Not that you couldn't defer action. We've already posted it.
Very briefly, I mean, there is the option of an additional special meeting.
Well, that was my...
It's due to Town Hall by February 1st. This meeting is January 29th, if need be, just, I'm not looking to give up another evening, but if need be, if this is that controversial, and the discussion goes on that long, we want to be thoughtful about it. I am completely prepared to not get it until that night because of the time constraints that our superintendent is under. So I think we should be contemplating possibly a January 30th, 31st special meeting.
I actually was...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Only that Tuesday is what day, the 29th?
Yeah.
And unless you're meeting Friday night, then Wednesday and Thursday are the only two days that you, nights that you could really look at. Mrs. Brand, and then Mrs., Ms. Iacono.
That's fine. The discussion pretty much has been all over the map, but there were a lot of people that actually took the time and did make some recommendations. And it's not easy making the recommendations, in fact, being specific, I think, quite frankly, is one of the hardest things to do. Easy target or not, it's not. It's actually easier just to give a number and then ask the superintendent to deliver. It's, this is not easy, and I do not relish this. But again, I'm looking for something that I'm hoping does the least amount of detriment, which I am hoping, again, with Dr. Title's looking at this, that has got to be our top priority. What we, the reason we are sitting here, and what we do, is not about employment, it is about our kids, and that, I think, is our top priority.
Mrs. Iacono.
I couldn't agree more. I think everybody comes with that. Like, my heart is honest to God, still racing in this, is sitting in this seat, having this discussion. My recommendation was going to be if administration needed more time, that maybe we could go ahead and just have a special meeting on the 31st, to give them a couple extra days to get this all together. But of course, that puts us under the gun to get it done in one night, so I don't know what people's thoughts are on that. But that would at least give them a couple more days to pull it together and do some research, and I will make myself available that evening. I, I, just throwing it out there.
I'm agreeable to that. I honestly, with what we're talking about, I don't know that Tuesday's gonna be enough time.
I mean, that at least gives them a couple more business days to get stuff...
We can defer to the superintendent, you're the one that's gonna be doing the workload and making the recommendations for us. You do have some time to do it, but...
I guess I would like to get it out there and take it as far as you can take it on the 29th, and you get to the end of that night, and you can't get it done.
Would you like more prep time? Because we're, we can, we can skip Tuesday and just go to Thursday and give you more prep time.
You mean, do the whole meeting Thursday?
Yeah. Not the business portion.
No, I'd do it the other way.
I, I don't care.
I'd make sure you buy yourself the buffer.
The two days.
Oh, yeah. I would definitely have a Tuesday meeting. If we really run into a problem, that's the 29th, we have to give 48-hour notice, we still could do it on the 31st. I'm hoping that we're able to do it, but again, for the same reason, it gives you the buffers on.
No, I have something then, but it's not that.
Sorry.
The 30th, we could not do, the Board of Finances here.
We could do it, we just couldn't do it in this room.
Yeah.
Which we wouldn't do it in this room anyways.
Need a larger venue anyway.
Right. I would do it on the 30th.
The 31st, you mean?
The 30th.
The 30th, okay.
So like, don't do the 29th?
Well, we can do the other items on the 29th, if you like.
Can I ask Dr. Title one question? The 30th would give you enough time to implement the decisions and still meet the towns?
But that's the problem, is that it's by February, I don't know the technicality of this. It's by February 1st. I mean, if you're meeting a decision at midnight on the 31st, and we have to turn a budget around and get it over, I just don't know if that's really feasible. So I'd rather do, if you're gonna have an extra night, if you just reserve, if the 30th is open for people, I would do that, and we'll do the budget that night, or you want to do it on the 29th, and if we don't finish it, everybody knows we're just gonna do it on the 30th?
Yeah.
As far as you can get on the 29th, maybe you can get to closure on it, I don't know.
We do have the Ludlow specs, which I'm sure the people from Ludlow would appreciate us moving on, and the policies, which have been hung around for a long time, so I would like to think that we could still meet on the 29th and reserve the 30th to complete it, if we have not been able to complete it.
Does you got...
Do we have a quorum of the board on the 30th, if we so choose to do so?
Yes.
Sounds like you have it.
As an addition.
As an addition.
In case you don't finish on the 29th.
Okay.
Because you're...
Then keep the 30th on your calendar.
Suggestion, Dr. Title, again, not to make your job more difficult, but given that, yeah, yeah, yeah. Given that there are lots of different viewpoints...
Mm-hmm.
Are you gonna be able, do you think, to give us some variations of what possibilities? I know you're not a fan of cutting, let's say, administration, but if you don't address it in some way, it's very difficult for some of us, then, to know how we're going to vote for the budget, et cetera. And I'm just wondering if there are a few issues dotted throughout that you could do some, you know, a couple of different variations.
I think there may be some things that haven't even been mentioned here, that I could put on the table, that might, or might not be amenable to, you know, and I'll brainstorm some of those as well. So it could be that there's things that nobody's even said. I mean, I have to say that, you know, we went through this exercise two years ago. We absorbed a 2.8-plus million-dollar cut. It's my first budget here, and we really did take, in my view, you know, all the low-hanging fruit. As we are all painfully aware, that low-hanging fruit was not put back on the tree. We cannot take it again. There was a cut in the central office at that time. There were cuts in clerical all throughout the district that are still with us. There are, there were cuts in lots of non-touch-kids areas. There were, and unfortunately, some did touch kids, as we're all aware. So the idea that you can get a cut of this magnitude without doing, you know, some significant change to our educational offerings, you know, a lot of the sort of, if there was easy stuff out there, if there was stuff that was non-productive, if there was stuff that could be consolidated, boy, you know, we took it, you know? And it, as you know, it's not back. So I will look at every angle that I can think of. I will consider all of the options that the board put on the table, and if you have additional ideas that you think of driving home, the sooner the better on those. But ideas that an individual or two here has that they think is very worthwhile, I just may not be able to recommend it. But, but I will, I will look at some, I will look at additional concepts, other than the ones here as well, that may be palatable.
And as Dr. Title has made some general comments about areas that he is not comfortable looking at, I'm sure he'll expand on those thoughts as to why he didn't pick those areas. Should a board member have something that didn't make the list and think, well, why didn't that make the list? I'm sure he'll be prepared to explain why.
Right.
Mr. Fattabene, you have a wrap-up comment?
I just wanted to get a clarification as to what this list is gonna look like, and what we're sort of expect. And is it sort of, my belief is, you're gonna give some sort of line item of what the description of the cut would be, in a dollar amount, and it's gonna be like a list of that nature. So you can sort of go through the list and say, this is the program we're gonna lose, this is the dollar amount associated with, and we can make decisions based on what that is.
That's correct.
So what I would suggest, then, what I would like to see, is try and incorporate some of the member's suggestions, and get that dollar amount, have your own suggestions, and maybe an asterisk by your recommendations of what you would recommend, and that list may add up to more than the 1.5, but then we can at least decide, then, whether you want to go to 1.5, whether you want to go to 1, whether you want to go to 7, whatever you want to go to, with the, with, you know, a better way to feel what the least impact would be for the educational system, based on those, that list. And so that's sort of what I...
We had a range of numbers. I think Dr. Title said, I think I heard that we're aiming at about 1.5. I think it would be difficult to have him say, well, is it 1.5 I'm aiming at, or is it something else I'm aiming at? So at the moment, unless board members collectively say, no, the list should be more than 1.5, I think that's the target that he'll be aiming at for his list, and I presume the list will come out, much in the format that the, here are the options to reduce the budget that came out a couple of years ago, if you remember that list that added up to 2.8.
2.825.
Yeah. So I assume that it'll come out in that format. Mrs. Cannelli.
Just, I think, Mr. Fattabene's point, though, is that if members have made suggestions that central office doesn't recommend, the members are still gonna want to know what the dollar amount was that got rejected, so better to have the information so that we can move full-speed ahead. I completely agree with the idea, though, that chief, you know, head of the list should be, this is what Dr. Title recommends, is having the least impact on the budget, but the idea of not having the information there at all for a rejected idea, I think, is just gonna end up saying, well, I still want to know that number before I approve something, so we might as well have the information.
And all I'm trying to do is say, how much time does the staff have to create the list and have a good, tight number, and if they had to then cost out every idea that every individual board member came up with, that might make it a very difficult task to accomplish between now and Tuesday. So that's why I'm asking that we give the superintendent some latitude, so that he's not, he's able to accomplish the basic task that we've set to him.
To Mrs. Cannelli's point, I, you know what? If we took the time to stick it out there, then I think it's fair enough to expect, if I'm making a decision, I want to be able to weigh it with all the options and the options that were brought to the table, so I do want to see a price tag with what people recommended.
It's part of, it's part of what we were asked to do, and I think to Mrs. Cannelli's earlier point, is that ultimately, it's gonna be our budget. So I think we need to see these different alternatives, and if that means that it'd be better to... And if that means that it'd be better to do the thirtieth instead of the twenty-ninth to give the superintendent an extra day, I'd rather do that than come in on the twenty-ninth and not be able to have the questions that we all asked answered, to the best of the ability.
I don't have any, I only have three more board members with that expression of approaching it.
Four.
Four.
One, two, three.
I don't mind. I don't mind.
If you want an opinion on, from me, do what's reasonable. Do, do what's reasonable.
I mean, just, you know.
I'm, I'm only asking the board to have, Dr. Title have some flexibility, because he does have a lot of work to do between now and Tuesday.
Oh. I'd just make one comment, too, that it, certainly, the, the dollar amount associated with that item, because of the short period of time, you know, I would expect just a, of the best guesstimate, I wouldn't expect a, a complete dollars and cents complete, just so, you know, you don't wanna get, I know the time is short, and I don't, would hope you don't get too, um, bogged down with trying to get an exact figure. That'd be my suggestion.
Okay.